Jim, so the hard times.
Yeah, you want to sponsor it?
My question is, what do you like? My question is, what do you like? I saw your email, so I'm like, oh, okay, it's Jim. But I knew you were a placeholder.
No, I just sponsored it, if you want.
What is, like, she's saying go get these fires.
In order for them to get the Aspire.
Oh, we have to tell them.
It is helpful, I don't know if it's a precondition. It's helpful if we are supportive of it.
That's what I thought, but I didn't know.
Yep. I didn't look at the statute, so I don't know for a fact whether it's mandatory to get it.
Well, it's a union gig, so usually Aspire and Union kind of go hand in hand, right?
Well, this is going to be a union built and union operated.
Please, Jim. Okay. Excuse me, sir.
We're going to get out of here that early? Hello, Mr. Mecca.
Five.
What's up, Holmes?
John.
Man, that gamble, man, that gamble.
So Jerry, as far as the last minute.
I want to sit up here with you.
Number eight, T2, A to first reading, and what's? So all, claims are being pulled off. Do I have to announce that it's changed or no? It's just not.
Hard for people to get past.
Okay, yeah, I think it was, there was a check for. Yep. I was the one who saw that, believe it or not.
I already announced it, I already told all my friends.
Buck out a little bit.
That's it.
What are we, what are we missing? Two long benches? You've got to get two, three.
And he didn't call me back.
Get them all out?
Just come here.
I know, but look at this. Where, I think they were held outside. Why now? We're getting a no.
Probably just make the top of the rebuild by design. We just, is there anything?
They always say, oh, you have to start on time. Is there, is that bullshit?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't have to start on time?
They're holding them out there. They're holding their people outside.
Yeah, the guards were keeping them out. Yeah.
So I don't. I got their own rules. I got no idea. I got no idea.
Oh, bless you.
I'm sorry about you, you're a colleague. Oh, guess what? My daughter is over at the multi and all the seniors was complaining the last two weeks, right? Saying where's Patricia Waiters? They, she just got to practice for real. Look, she just called me. A big picture of me says Pat Waiters for mail on a big computer screen. Wait till Vanessa get to work in the morning. I'm serious, they just put it out. The library just posted.
So, uh.
I'm getting new boxing gloves for the debate.
7:05, Jim.
I know. Just letting you know. Ruben, can you tell me when it's 7:07?
I, I'll just talk.
Like the airplane? Yes, sir, yes, sir. All right. Can I, is it too late? All right, so.
I would like to vouch to all those present that notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, and that notice was published in the city website. Copies provided, Bergen Record, Ellis Special, North Star Ledger, Jersey Journal, also placed on a bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, should be made to the city clerk.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
Let the leaders of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Thanks. Sorry, a couple of minutes late, but it seemed like there was a lot of commotion getting into the building.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Jabour?
Here.
President Zano?
Present.
Mr. Quintero?
Present.
Mr. Ramos?
Present.
Mr. Russo?
Present.
President Doyle?
Present. A little bit of housekeeping. T2, Resolution T2 is being carried, and among the first, the readings, for ordinance or first reading, excuse me, at the end, number eight is carried, but number two is not. Here it's stricken. I have the wrong version? Okay. All right, so two matters are being carried to the next meeting if you're here for number eight in first reading or T2. Thank you. Want to get rid of that? All right. All right, so.
Are you waiting?
Yes.
I just, we'll just give the public a little bit of time to, please focus like laser on your tasks. Okay, so we're going to start with the hearings, second readings, and final hearing on ordinances.
You ready?
Yep, we're ready to.
We have a hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 58-27.1 recreation fees. We don't know if anybody signed up.
Yeah, I was going to say, can.
Manny. Anybody signed up for the ordinance for recreation?
Recreation fees. Manny, you can start us off.
The first order.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council, members of the public. Good to see a robust contingency of the public, so I will be brief. I didn't sign for the other two, but I'll get them there.
We'll add you.
All right, thank you, sir. Council President, just a quick, brief here question because it's important to understand. I followed up trying to find in last meeting where you discussed B 796. If it could be possible, if members of the public could understand further details in regards to this ordinance, because it says, as it is written, that the reason for the change or the amendment on the structure of the fees is because the purpose. I'm just trying to read here, make sure I got it right. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand, members of the public, that it is because the Department of Recreation is saying that they have to raise the fees due to cost of running the different programs, but could members of the public understand why is it going from one amount to the other, the highest, other than what I just asked you right now? The reasoning behind? What is the purpose? How much more expensive is it to run a program from last year or the year before that? Are these increases purposely being planned in any specific order? Is it going to be incremental in further years? How many times will you amend the fees? Or how many times have you amended fees, if that's a better question? But it is important for members of the public to understand what is the structure of the increase of these fees, if possible, Council President, because some people, I know that also in the ordinance, it also is stated, I took a minute to read it, it's also stated that the fees are subject to change at the discretion of the director. So what is the purpose of the fees if the director could change them? Or the director could, I know the director cannot establish a fee, that is clear, but can you help members of the public understand a little bit more why the fees? What is the cost effectiveness of raising the fees? How much more are we paying yearly to justify the raising of the fees? And the amount that was struck in the ordinance? Was that the original amount?
Yes, the current amounts are struck and the underlined amounts are the new amounts.
And they run from $35 to $100 depending for per program? Or is it each individual?
Yep.
Correct?
Per program.
Okay. Yeah.
There's four numbers in there.
Yeah, there are, just four. But my question was, again, the one that stuck out to me was the amounts of how quickly it moves from 35 for children to 100. That is a little bit, you know, pricey in my book. I know that there are carves out here, but again, can Council President do a little bit more with the council? Thank you, that's my question.
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Patricia Waiters?
Hi.
Don't touch the mic.
Thank you, Patricia Waiters. I'm a little confused, but all of the questions Manny just asked you, I want you to answer them later. I don't want to lose my train of thought. I remember when recreation for our children's was free, okay? Now, I'm going to be fair, because this town has become nothing but about money. From $35 to $100, you're making my stomach hurt, okay? For simple recreation programs that I've sat here in Hoboken the last two years and seen disappear. This is a disgrace, and you being real rude right now, and I mean, are you listening?
I am listening.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to help Manny sign up, but please proceed.
Again, there was a time when there was no recreation fees. I want to learn a little more about why it was a fee, first of all, and I know we can't run programs for free. They gave us a little discount for the free and reduced lunch kids and the HHA kids and all of that good stuff, I know that too. So tonight, when you going from $35 to whatever the crazy amount is, are you taking into consideration that our kids may or may not be able to play recreation or join any type of recreation? Are you taking that into consideration?
Yes.
Because everybody don't have the money and certain things they don't even want to play and involve themselves in, and then that's how they get in trouble, because we being rejected and turned away from things. Now recreation, are you kidding me?
Kids who have free or reduced lunch have $0 for programs, zero. Zero. No charge. If you're a free or reduced lunch student.
Excellent, that's what I.
It's zero, and it's not changing.
Thank you, it won't change for them, as long as it don't change for them, because it's not fair, and I'm just here speaking on that behalf, because.
Still zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. So the fees anyway, they go apply to what? To keep the, maintain the field, equipment, or whatever else? That's what the fees are applied to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They're related to the program.
See, that was easy, right?
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you. No other members of the public have signed up?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Manny, I don't, not really clear what you don't understand. The fees are X dollars range to Y, and it's been over a decade, and so the fees are going up a little bit, and so, and the fees are allocated towards the programs, they're not going into general revenue. Does that help? Mr.?
Council President?
Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I know we always include those children who qualify for free or reduced lunch at a $0 base, but what about those families that just missed that cutoff? What about a family of five, three kids, multiple sports per year, for each of those children, at $100 apiece, at $600 a year, just in recreation fees, at its worst? And because I know my children are in rec programs, it's not just the fee. Every single rec program that we run, the parents are asked to raise money, put more money into the programming, buy different equipment, spend money on a t-shirt, buy new pair of cleats. That cost continues to rise every single year. We've made decisions in the city of Hoboken to actually pull some programs in-house that were very successful on their own, raising that money, and it was a zero cost to those children. And then we were very, and then we did the exact opposite as well, where we outsourced some programs that actually wound up costing those parents a lot more money, thousands of dollars, because of those programming. I just can't see how anyone on this council can continue to support increasing those costs for families in the city of Hoboken. There's absolutely no way I could support this tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 192-4A Parking for Persons with Disabilities to Add and Remove Reserved Parking Spaces.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
The ordinance, Hearing on an Ordinance Amending Chapter 190-11 Entitled Loading Zones to Remove an Existing Loading Zone Located on Second Street to Adams Street.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an Ordinance Amending 190-6.1 of Hoboken City Code Designate Reserved Parking for Hudson County Parks Department on 10th Street.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Russo?
Was this a parking space currently for the city of Hoboken residents that we're removing and then making it a designated space?
It's for the sheriff.
It was currently a parking space.
So it's currently available as on-street parking adjacent to the park, so technically that is open to residents, correct?
And then we're taking that parking space away for county parks vehicles?
So during business hours, there's been an uptick in complaints about the county vehicles in the park and safety concerns about those cars entering and exiting the park, given the volume of people in the park. So the county requested the opportunity to add a parks designated space outside of the park, which is similar to and mirrors the process that we've had. I believe in all of the city parks now, we've created designated daytime parking spaces for those staff members to park with the city vehicles outside of the park similarly.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Number five, 804.
Hearing on an Ordinance Amending and Supplementing an Ordinance Establishing a Schedule of Classifications and allocations of Titles for the herein mentioned Positions in the city of Hoboken.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
I'd like to.
Mr. Cohen?
I'd like to.
It's all right.
This is on the.
Other ordinance.
Schedule of classification and allocations of titles.
Yes, yes, I got it. So we've been sitting for four to five years with a lawsuit or litigation, one that has been decided by the civil service several times for a fire chief, and we've not come to closure with that. Well, we've come to closure. The civil service has ruled on that. Now, before I go voting on anything, I want to have that buttoned up, one. Two, when I researched across Hudson County, I mean, I can't look at the state because Hudson County is different, our numbers are super high. Not that I don't, again, I'll say it up here, not that I don't support my fire police, but, you know, we're just blindly doing this. All the money we spent on the lawsuit against a fire chief could have gone to this race instead. However, we now are four or five years, we still don't have anything. We spent $10,000 on legal, or fines, I should say, I believe, that could have helped fund this, but we just threw that out the window. So I don't understand why we're, if we're on a fiscal cliff, as Kayla's predecessor mentioned to us, we just keep adding on, adding on, adding on, adding on, again and again, and we want to sit up here and talk about all these other things, and yet we have to pay the piper at some point. We just sit up here and vote and vote and vote, yes, 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 like we own their wallets. We don't own their wallets, guys. Let's wake up. I think this is ridiculous that we're asking for this with the fact that we have a lawsuit that's, or a settled lawsuit that's sitting or been pending for a couple months now. We've been paying fee, paying up to 100 a day, so I think we're up to 10 grand, and we haven't put that to closure. So I don't know where everybody's heads are up here, but you vote yes for this? Come on. Like, we can't close the chapter on something and then we're worried about raising more money on a salary. I'm a no tonight on this.
Okay, Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance amending and supplementing, amending the Hoboken City Code, Chapter 59, Article 7, Special Law Enforcement Officers Who Establish the Position of Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers in Coordination with the Hoboken Board of Education.
Leslie Norwood has signed up to speak.
Thank you. Leslie Norwood, Hoboken resident, and I must say that the statements I make are in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity as a trustee of the Hoboken Board of Education. The statements are not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinions. Exactly one week ago, a school shooting at the Annunciation Catholic School in Minneapolis left two children dead and 21 people injured. This was just the latest incident in the epidemic of gun violence in our country. I'm not the only parent that worries about the many what ifs that might happen every day when my children leave the house. I know and understand that some may have concerns about class III safety officers in schools potentially creating an adversarial and less welcoming learning environment. However, as I speak with other people in town and many, many parents, the overwhelming sentiment is that the Hoboken Police Department's community-based policing paradigm for its school resource officers works and works well. That means they're an integral part of the school community. These officers are focused on building relationships and serving as a positive role model, rather than solely reacting to any incident. I've had children in the Hoboken Public Schools for a decade now, and my youngest won't graduate from Hoboken High School for another nine years. It is important to me that all of our city's children continue to be safe at school every day and have positive relationships with the safety and law enforcement officers that might be in those schools. To that end, I want to express my support for the resolution authorizing class III officers and applaud the partnership between the city, Hoboken Police Department, and Superintendent Johnson to ensure that there are an adequate number of school safety resources, and those resources will be managed by the Hoboken Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. There are no other members of the public signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, thanks. First, I applaud this, and for all the reasons that Leslie just mentioned, you know, it's a shame that we have to even consider something like this, but, you know, I think people feel helpless and don't know what to do, so this is a step that it sounds like we can do, so I'm supportive. The one thing I just maybe wanted to ask, I don't know if it's Chief Aguirre or Franti, just to talk about the hiring, like, where do we source these class III? Is it easy to do? You know, what is it, what are their responsibilities maybe different relative to the rest of our police officers?
Good evening, council members. So the pool is any New Jersey police officer who has recently retired within the last three years, and once they, you know, meet those qualifications, they actually become school resource officer certified as well, so they can perform the same functions within the school as any full-time police officer, and will all be certified as school resource officers.
Oh, great, awesome. And are they, do you feel like there's a lot to choose from? I know we've had, I know other pools are harder to source. Is this a pool that you feel confident will be able to source people for?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yeah, because you're pulling from every retired officer that retires within the state of New Jersey within the last three years, and that constantly grows.
Awesome.
So I feel that this is an easy pool of candidates to hire from.
Fantastic. And then is this, and it may have been in there and I've forgotten since I read it last, is this the city paying for this? Is the Board of Ed paying for this? Board of Ed's paying for it, great. Thanks, awesome, thank you.
Chief, while you're there, you said, you said only retired police officers within the last three years, is that correct?
Correct, right, that's a state mandate.
There's no, there's no mandatory requirement retirement age for police officers, is there?
65.
65?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, is the, okay, so these could be 68-year-old at probably the most.
Potentially, yes.
The oldest that you would have, okay.
That's not typically the candidates that normally apply for the position, but.
I know, I'm just.
It can happen, yes, I can't take that off the table.
I'm not being ageist.
There's no age discrimination.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Council President? Councilman Russo?
By all means. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Oh, sure. I was just going to add some additional information. Thank you, Chief. So the class III officers, there's a few questions that I know came up for me that I answered that I thought would be helpful just to share the information. One, class III officers can be armed, so they are similarly prepared as our school resource officers now who are uniformed police officers. The difference is that I think that's key, is the school resource officers, if there's an emergency in the city, can actually be pulled off of duty in the school to attend to that community emergency. These officers actually stay on-site, even if there's something happening in the larger community, which I think is an important difference. This is fully funded through the Hoboken Board of Education. It's my understanding they've already identified and hired six officers as part of this program, and so I appreciate the collaboration between the city, the police department, and the Board of Education to make this possible, you know, as Councilwoman Fisher said, I think, and as Ms. Norwood said, you know, this is unfortunately the increasing concern in our community, and every time there's another news cycle of another story, we're reminded of that. So I'm grateful that the Board of Education has took this initiative in order to ensure that our schools is prepared as possible. So I just wanted to add some additional clarifications there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. I love everything about this. I love everything about this right now, and I love everything about this several years I love everything about this right now, and I love everything about this several years ago, when, when we potentially spoke about putting police officers in our schools after yet another school shooting. What's concerning, though, is that there was a lot of pushback several years ago about putting police officers in our schools, because people just didn't want guns in schools. And there may be some council people up here that are supporting this here tonight that weren't supportive back then to put those officers in those schools. So, I'm very happy that this common sense solution comes to bear here tonight, and I'm very happy that it's before us, and I'm extremely happy and hopeful that everyone will vote for it tonight. So, I appreciate that.
Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Council President. Unfortunately, this has become a necessity, and I could tell you firsthand, from my experiences, where I work currently, we've had staff members threatened by former students to commit similar incidents that we've seen in other schools. I've come into work with my own classroom, have bullet holes in them, so this is something that we experience in my neighborhood and students across the country, and maybe where I work, and students across the country experience these things all too daily, unfortunately. So, while unfortunately this has become commonplace, and up top, the higher above us hasn't done enough to regulate those types of weapons, in my opinion, this has to become a necessity to keep people out of the building, from doing harm to our children the best we can. So, this has to be a necessary expense that I've witnessed firsthand, and have to walk through a metal detector through work every day, and we have to welcome it to avoid unfortunate serious incidents. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on the Northern Semending, Chapter 110-17, requiring waste containerization for large multifamily building.
There's no one signed up to speak on this?
Motion closed, public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on the Northern, the City of Hoboken, in the county of Hudson State, New Jersey, amending Chapter 193 of the Code of the City of Hoboken, entitled Water, adding Article 4, entitled Lead Service Replacement, and Section 193-18, entitled Mandatory Replacement of Lead Service Lines.
Thank you. Cheryl Phallic?
Mostly questions, which I hope I can get some answers for, because generally I don't actually get answers to the questions I ask. Other people do. This is not something that I have any expertise on. I, you know, I used Google after reading it, trying to figure out what it was, and it looks like there was a law passed or an executive order passed requiring that all lead pipes be replaced by 2031. But we're going to make it happen in the next three months after this ordinance is passed, so 90 days from signing off. I don't necessarily have a problem with that. What I don't understand, and I read it, I think I understand it, but then again, it was a little oily. Are we asking the residents to pay for this? The property owners? Okay, that mean, unless they don't want the city to do it, so then it's saying the city is paying for it, so we have the money for that? Yes? Because all I hear is we have a financial cliff where, and we have until 2031. So, I guess I'm not, while I guess in the long run it's a good thing, I guess I'm not sure this is the right time, the right place. If we have some time, we're getting tax increases, we have other expenditures for the city that I'm not sure we can afford, why don't we get our house in order first and then do it? And if, since the city, the owner can let the city do it, can somebody just tell me what pot in the budget that's coming from? Thank you.
Yomira?
Um.
Not yet.
No, why don't we go through, if you can keep track. Eric Volpe?
Yeah, like Cheryl, or even, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but yeah, this only very recently came to my attention, and I have a lot of more questions than answers, and I'm kind of wondering about this. First of all, yeah, so I could be wrong about what I know about it, so correct me if I am, but as far as I understand, this came about as a result of an executive order by the governor. Last time I looked, and it was a while ago, this governor had given more executive orders than any governor in the history of the state of New Jersey. So, I think it's of dubious legality. Last time I looked, I'm being sarcastic, I won't be, but we live, this country is a constitutional republic or a democratic republic, supposedly laws are made by legislatures, not by executive fiat, executive order. So, I think that's very problematic. It was because the governor gave an executive order, and it means we should be running and jumping.
Mr. Volpe, it is a law, just in case. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm asking, so.
Yep.
This has been passed by the legislature.
Yeah, public law, 2021.
All right.
Well, once again, okay. 183 NJHSA 5812A 40.
Okay, well, thank you for the order. Okay, you clarified that. Be that as it may, once again, as far as I understand, it wasn't until 2031, so we seem to really be rushing on that, and I really have to wonder, maybe a law was passed, but I have to wonder what is the, what is the actual safety hazard involved with this? I mean, has that actually been studied? I mean, I know lead, we do know the deleterious effects of lead, but we have a lot of old building. Hoboken's a very old city, as we all know, old buildings, sorry, old infrastructure. A lot of people have lived here a long time, so I really wonder, has this been studied as far as the actual health effects of it? I just, you know, I think it's kind of interesting, because we have a lot of studies showing the deleterious effects of the COVID-19 vaccine, yet we're still pushing on the website, as I talked about last time, lots and lots of scientific studies on the deleterious effects of excessive EMF exposure, and once again, the city has bent over backwards to increase the amount of that we're being exposed to. So, I don't really see the urgency now in this, which I haven't seen anything, you know, explaining the health, you know, the health effects of this. And once again, I mean, there's also the question of what's this going to do to small landlords and, and of course, tenants, you know? As you know, I'm very involved with tenants, tenants' issues, and we're all concerned about tenants, and obviously what affects landlords is also going to affect tenants, also small, you know, condo owners and all that stuff. So, this could have a huge financial impact on a great many people, so I'm very concerned about that. So, I agree with Cheryl, I think we should be, we should be holding off. And I also don't remember when the first reading was. I mean, I could have missed that easily enough, but I, I did.
Last time.
It was last time.
Yeah.
I thought I was here and I thought I saw it, or didn't see it. But anyway, yeah, I'm, I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Phallic, just, I'm looking who's next. Manny, you signed up for this, but while it is not a 90-day thing, it, there'll be a program that will probably aggressively just make 2031, so there's nothing that's happening in the next 90 days. I'm not sure where you got that impression.
The, the 90 days is they're trying to get the...
To get people to register.
They're trying to get the program set up, just literally set up, so that then people can go and register and just say, okay, you can come do it when it's our time. But it's a, it's a whole process where they have to test first, and then they're going to coordinate, so we're not, you know, there's probably a thousand of these in the city that they're estimating, and imagine a thousand roads that we're going to dig up? Like, it's a pretty, wait, 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 I understand, but the, the city is doing it in a programmatic way, where, you know, if there's three on a block, they'll do the block all at the same time. So, they have to, it's a whole process to find them all, and then, you know, inventory them, and then come up with a plan to replace them all, all by 2031, so.
There's an online map, actually, that will, to your point, there's this online map that's actually going to start tracking it, so you may not have to register if you're already registered by virtue of this existing resource, but they're trying to build that out to be comprehensive.
Or you can notify the city that you've already had your lead lines replaced, and then that gets recorded, and they will not be following up at that property.
So, let's let Manny have his time.
Thank you, Council President, Manuel Rivera Soler. Council President, this ordinance and what's happening, the discussion that's being on, and I appreciate answering the questions from prior members of the public, but in reviewing last meeting, which gives you an in-depth, in my brain, how much I love council meetings, that I review the YouTube meeting, which, please, watch them and like it, but Council President, this is what happens. In the last meeting, that the gentleman didn't know even when it was on first reading, there was confusion even then. Councilmember Fisher had a question. She mentioned, maybe she clarified it for the housing authority. So, even though we know that these things are mandatory and these things are necessary, but it is, it is important that members of the public get that explanation in the first reading. Sometimes you go through it rather fast, and not, no offense, but it needs to be explained further, so that way, when we get up here, when time is of essence, we run through the meeting fast, but there are questions, like I always said. So, and this is, would be the question, in the first reading, were the things that were discussed briefly and the ones that were not understood, have they been clarified? Are they in the printout that one can get when one visits the website, as you point out, Council President, last meeting? That, again, no criticism, but has, has all of that been resolved? And as was said, what, if anything, would be behoove it for members of the public to know those mom-and-pops and everything in between? How would they be affected, again, with this ordinance? And I yield back, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. Mary Andreaka?
Mary Andreaka, 159 Ninth Street. I'm really very concerned about this, because I have a plumber that I work with on the building I live in, and he has changed water pipes, and it's a big deal. It's a really big deal. Our stupid-ass governor is rich, so he doesn't really understand money problems, but you have to rip up the sidewalks. My water plate is in the middle of the sidewalk in front of me, and it feeds into the boiler, and you get water for your home, too. And since I've lived here 37 years, I'm not dead yet, I can't understand the lead problem. Lead is a problem if you breathe it in, but maybe, maybe people do get sick, I don't know, but I'm not dead yet. This is going to be major. You said that this is, I think it's involving the water utilities, so this means that to pay for some of this, because this is going to cost extraordinary amount of money, even if it takes to 31, which it will, the prices go up, and it's going to be even more than what it is now, estimated. I don't even know, do you have a price on what it's estimated to be? Probably not. You say how many streets? I mean, how many?
It's not by street.
It's a thousand, they're estimating it's about a thousand. They don't know, but they're guessing it's a thousand service lines.
Thousand buildings, not streets.
Okay, they're guessing. I know, that's a funny word, guessing. Usually, it's like, when you want to do something, it always takes longer than you need, and if you guess a figure, it's always bigger than it, than they estimate. These are thousands of buildings in this town. There are many street, many buildings on the street. Just on my street alone, between Garden and Bloomfield, count the houses. I, I mean, this is an incredible, unrealistic for an urban area. I mean, we're, the city's going to pay for this? Right, with increasing our taxes. And not only that, I pay a surcharge on water and have all the years I've lived in this town, and so do other tenants, so that's going to even put more pressure and hardship on us, all for stupid lead pipes in an urban area? I would have thought that it would at least, people, if they want to remove it, they have the choice, not to be forced by authoritarian governments. This is ridiculous. I cannot, you know, life is hard enough, I can't even believe this. I just found out about this. This is crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. No other members of the public are signed up?
Motion closed, public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I would hasten to, if you, we've all probably heard of Flint, Michigan, we've all heard probably about the lead water conditions in Newark. These are very serious health risks. The fact that you have not been afflicted by it does not, it's also state law. We're not choosing to volunteer to get into this program. We, it's a unfunded mandate, so, but I think it's a worthwhile mandate. It's not just something that, you know, people's health is, is pretty darn important, so, and there are many, you know, nooks and crannies of this, many, many service lines have already been replaced. So, we go out, we figure out where they need to be replaced, and they get replaced, maybe when the next road gets ripped up for another service line. It's not going to be just, let's start at the bottom of town and rip up every, you know, service line to, into the, into every home in the city. So, you will see more. There will be, the program will come next, and as I believe there's two more ordinances that will supplement how this will be played out.
Yeah, just one quick thing on the, two things. One is, we already have an inventory of the ones that have been replaced, we already have an inventory of some that we know are lead lines, and then there's just this, this portion that they have to test and identify, and they are guessing based on historical practice, the total will be around a thousand, give or take. So, it's not just a made-up number, it's based on what they've seen. Second, this is being funded through our water utility, through water rates, and the way to think about that is, we, we're making major investments in our water upgrades, water system upgrades every year. Those will just be pushed out a few years in favor of these. This will be the projects that we will spend our water rates on over the next few years, and then the, you know, investment in our water system will come back and beyond that. And, and some of that is because we've made a bunch of improvements in our water system, and two, you know, the community can only tolerate so many roads being opened at once, so it's really, I know, but it's really navigating all that. It's a pretty big project. It's in the committee that Phil and, and our Councilman Cohen, Councilman Russo and I are in, and as Jim said, this, or Council President Doyle, it's not, you know, this is a mandate. We're just trying to figure out how we navigate this through our, our city, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Excuse me, President Doyle?
Aye.
Hearing on the Northern Semending, Re-Adopting and Re-Indorsing the Redevelopment Plan for the Western Edge Redevelopment Area, Jefferson and Madison Street subareas.
Just give Councilman Remus a moment to leave the chambers.
And while we're at it, if everyone could remember to please silence your phones, we've been having some phones going off during the meeting thus far. Okay. First speaker on this, Max Merker.
Good evening, council members. Maxwell Merker, Chason Lamparello, Malin Incapuzo, on behalf of the City of Union City. Our client respectfully opposes the adoption of Ordinance B-808, titled Ordinance Amending, Re-Adopting, and Re-Indorsing the Redevelopment Plan for the Western Edge Redevelopment Area, Jefferson and Madison Street Subareas. As this council is well aware, there's ongoing litigation related to the Western Edge Redevelopment Plan, its subsequent amendments, and the settlements entered into between the city and the developers. When the settlement agreements were approved about a year ago, in September 2024, the council represented to the public that by entering into these agreements, the related litigation would be resolved. This remains untrue. The litigation remains pending, and the council's actions tonight in adopting Ordinance B-808 will not bring that litigation to a close. Ordinance B-808 seeks to implement various amendments to the Western Edge Redevelopment Plan, which are provided within the settlement agreements. These amendments and provisions directly benefit the private developers with little to no benefit to the people of Hoboken, such as no additional requirements for affordable housing. Instead, one such change includes an increase to permitted building and yard requirements and maximum building coverage at street level. When reviewing the proposed amendments on June 10th of this year, the Hoboken Planning Board specifically raised... Board specifically raised concerns regarding these proposed changes. Based on the planning board's experience and expertise, the planning board recommended that the city reconsider the proposed lot coverage change up to 90% for the Jefferson Street Subarea and the proposed lot change, coverage of up to 100% for the Madison Street Subarea, finding both to be excessive and unreasonable. The current Western Edge Redevelopment Plan permits maximum building coverage at up to 70%. Additionally, this amendment provides that maximum building coverage at street level shall exclude all cantilevers, all building extrusions, protrusions, canopies, awnings, and other improvements not directly touching the ground. This calculation is the exact opposite of how the planning board has historically calculated building coverage at street level to prevent a building from taking an entire lot. Tonight, despite the formal recommendation from the planning board, the city council remains bound by the nature of the settlement agreements to disregard the planning board's guidance and instead approve amendments that benefit the private developers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Merker. Arthur Neese.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I am Arthur Neese. My firm is Beatty Padavano. We represent the Palisades Cliffs Protection Alliance, Inc., which is a nonprofit corporation of the state of New Jersey. Earlier today, my partner, John Lamb, sent a letter in, and I think it was received. I just want to say that he was out of the office for the last three weeks, and I didn't even make it into the office today. So that's the reason for the tardiness. I'm not going to read the entire letter, I'm just going to cover some highlights that I think are important for your consideration. Obviously, my client, Palisades Cliffs Protection Alliance opposes this new ordinance. Our opposition is especially necessary because there has not been a full analysis of 2025 conditions with respect to the Western Edge Redevelopment Plan and for the provision of changes that would be mandated by consideration of a 2025 reconsideration of the plan itself. I also want to point out that as, and by the way, my client supports Mr. Merker's statement to the council. I also want to point out that there is litigation going on, and that some of that litigation involves conflicts of councilpeople who were involved in the original passage and adoption of the Western Edge Redevelopment Plan and has carried forward throughout time. I also want to say that my client does not waive those conflicts. Instead, we point them out that they still exist, as far as I can tell. With regard to the disclosure of those conflicts, it is, in our view at least, incumbent upon any councilmember to recuse themselves from the consideration of any kind of law, ordinance or otherwise, in which they may or do have an interest. Based on what little we've been able to glean thus far, it appears that there are interested or were interested councilpeople who may have tainted the entirety of the process by which the Western Edge Redevelopment Plan was adopted. With regard to tonight, part of what's being done is you are amending the ordinance, the prior ordinances, but in our view at least, it's not going to be legally sufficient as to what you are doing. That will be part of the lawsuits that are going on and that my client will support. With regard to re-adoption, it's not appropriate for this new ordinance to be updated and/or without current studies. In fact, as I said earlier, there are no current studies. You're just adopting something that is as many as 10 years old with minor variations that, in our view, were created for the purposes of the developers and not for the citizens of Hoboken. We have noted that there are issues with the public notice of tonight's meeting, and I would just point out that the, the planning board did make recommendations concerning building coverage, which are apparently being ignored in this present new ordinance. From our point of view, what you are doing tonight is a waste of time and money, especially and given the fact that there is litigation concerning the settlement agreements that is still pending. We think that what is happening here tonight is premature and that you ought to defer any action on this ordinance until those actions are fully concluded. Finally, I'll just note that the process by which you folks are considering this ordinance tonight has been, to say it mildly, extremely confusing. That's really what I wanted to express to you, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Neese.
Evening, everyone. Cameron McLeod of Gibbons PC, here on behalf of Just Block 112 LLC and Hoboken Western Edge LLC, the designated redevelopers and plaintiffs in the longstanding litigation between the City of Hoboken, which has resolved, and the Cities of Union City and Palisade Cliff Protection Alliance, which has not resolved because they continue to drag out this litigation. So this is not something that is of the developer's interest to continue beating their heads against a wall. In fact, we entered into a settlement agreement, as Mr. Merker noted, almost a year ago this week, I think, to resolve those claims. And frankly, this is a further implementation of those claims. The ordinance tonight addresses the lot coverages and really the ability to convert a proposed hotel into an inclusionary residential development. So again, when we start looking through the actual impacts of this ordinance and what Union City and Palisade Cliff Protection Alliance are objecting to, they're completely specious. When we look at what actually results here, the city, and you look at the ordinances proposed, expressly relies upon and identifies the fact that this will be an inclusionary development that occurs on the Lot 1.02, the northern portion of Just Block 112. The obvious part of this is obviously that it's part of existing litigation, and it's not really a forum for real litigation of other claims. We're not looking to see any of those claims revitalized because frankly, the judge has repeatedly dismissed each and every one of the claims that's been alleged by the representatives of Union City and the Palisade Cliff Protection Alliance. And the ordinance itself strikes an interesting balance between height and lot coverage on the affected blocks. That's a clear choice the city made in settlement, it's a clear choice that this council will make as well in determining whether to advance this ordinance and whether to accept it as it stands. Now, the suggestion's been made that the city is somehow bound necessarily to vote for this. It's a conditional settlement. It's always been a conditional settlement, and as this body recognized when this settlement was entered a year ago, there are certain choices that are made as part of that. And recognizing that the continued interest of Union City and Palisade Cliff Protection Alliance is simply to delay this as long as humanly possible, that's the only interest served by voting no against this application. So I implore the council to continue to make the wise decisions you have already and vote yes in favor of the ordinance as it's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. There are no other members of the public signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would, as a member of the planning board, I do feel, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I do feel it's worth clearing the air a little bit. Yes, the planning board made a recommendation that the lot coverage, increasing it from, I believe, 70 to 90 was something that the planning board opined, they considered that maybe in the future not doing that. But the planning board did unanimously vote that this plan amendment was consistent with the master plan. So the distinction in non-redevelopment areas, the zoning lot coverage applies, but in redevelopment areas, the master plan is virtually silent on matters such as what the lot coverage should be. So it's, the expression of that desire was applying the regular Hoboken zoning area concepts of lot coverage to a redevelopment area as an aspirational goal. And so, but anyway, it is what it is. Anybody else, or are we, Mr. Frina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher. Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
President Vano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Director Brown, could you, like, summon?
Councilman Remus to return.
Thank you, yeah. So we're on to number 10. Okay, Jimmy, I think we're, we're good to go.
Excuse me, Hearing on the Northern Cementing North End Redevelopment Plan for the North End Rehabilitation Area.
No members of the public have signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Do you sign it?
Heine did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had first reading number 10, excuse me, yeah, first reading number 10. I apologize, Mr. Ahmed.
No, that's good.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's good. Thank you, Council President, Heine Ahmed, Hoboken. I haven't been here in a while. It's been a very rough last several months. Quite frankly, I didn't want to be here tonight either. I'm here to talk about the redevelopment amendments that you're considering tonight. I reached out to pretty much everyone on the council, except for Councilman Quintero. I didn't have your number, I apologize. I would have reached out to you, too. The property in discussion is directly behind the Beer Garden. It's a roughly 20,000-foot site, and it abuts the Beer Garden. The Beer Garden, it's been rough the last several months, but there's been a lot of construction up there. And they've been ripping sidewalks up and dust everywhere, and it's been tough, but that's the way it's going to be to make the area better. With regard to this property, what we're really looking for is that, we reached out to the owner, the owner's on vacation. We really want an opportunity to talk to him. It's not in opposition to the project, we don't want to see this project not happen. It's the fact that, for whatever reason, the forces of nature that want to push buildings down and you get wider, thick buildings. So what we have, and I want to be clear to the public so you understand, when you walk in the Beer Garden, what you see now is a brick wall, six feet high, that goes back roughly about 75 feet, and then you have the Winter Garden. To our west where that wall is, you will now see a wall that is 70, sorry, 65 to 70 feet deep, which is pretty much the whole length of the Beer Garden, and 100 feet tall. And the issue we're having with it is that it's going to be a blank wall, that they're proposing to put a mural, but it's going to make the space feel very, you know, enclosed. And what we're asking for is, again, not to stop the development, but to have a chance to talk to the developer to say, is there a way you could take some of that mass and push it back and up? We have no problems with height. The sun's going to get blocked, doesn't matter if it's nine or 10 or 11, it's going to be the same. But we have a chance here to prevent something, to get a win-win situation, rather than opposition, rather than more fighting, rather than to see, you know, God forbid the Beer Garden fail. You know, the Beer Garden was one of the first businesses, I brought the town here back in 2010, survived 15 years, there was nothing up there. You know, people thought we were crazy to bring a beer garden and weigh uptown by itself. And it worked out, and we'd like to see it continue to work out. A lot of people on the council, a lot of people in this room have been there at some point in time. It's a good establishment, I think it's a good amenity to the city. It would be sad to have the very thing that could help it in the long run, if more people are up there, be the thing that takes it away. So all we're asking for over here is that, to hit a pause button for two weeks, to give us a chance to talk to the developer, you know, he was on vacation, just the timing of the year. And, you know, we're pretty certain that we could get an amicable situation that works for the developer and that works for the Beer Garden, so it doesn't have to be one or the other. We're just asking for two weeks, in fairness, to talk to them. You know, I think that, I really do think a win-win could happen here, and it would be an opportunity lost if we didn't take that, to just a two-week pause to figure it out. I appreciate your time, and I'd hope you would put this off for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Once again, there's.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council President.
Yes, Councilman Cohen.
So first, I was on the zoning board in 2010 that approved the adaptive reuse of the building which became the Pilsner House. I'm a frequent attendee, I've had my 50th birthday party there, not to age myself, in the Pacolo Club.
20 years ago?
Yeah, 20 years ago.
Jim, you got him.
But it's a place that, and it's in the ward that I represent, I think it's a wonderful place, and Joe and I had an event there just a few weeks ago for a bunch of folks in town. There was a public hearing with respect to this project. The presentation was from Frank Minervini, who's an excellent architect, made the presentation, showed a plan that would include a mural on the wall that was facing the Beer Garden. I spoke with the proprietor of the Beer Garden, as well as Mr. Ahmed, about this. I gave the proprietor of the Beer Garden Mr. Minervini's office phone number, encouraged them to have a conversation. They didn't know a lot, they didn't attend the meeting unfortunately, but a lot of people did. You know, Councilman Russo, Councilman Jabour, I was there, I think Councilman Fisher as well. It was a thorough presentation. It's a good project. This is a project that's required to settle litigation. We were talking about settlements, the importance of settlement. From my perspective, representing the neighborhood, the suggestion to raise another two stories of height on this building in this neighborhood to create a 20-foot access between the two buildings isn't really a benefit to the neighborhood, number one. And number two, I'm confident that the building department would allow that when this construction is done, to protect the customers of the Beer Garden so it's done safely and so that the people who are there will be able to enjoy the space during the project. And I also want to emphasize the fact that the reason this case settled was, and I know this is very important to Councilman Russo as well as to myself, was to get affordable housing built that should have been built at the time of the Harlow, and it's being built in this project. And that's what affected the change. There's already an improved building for that site at the same location that would be built as a matter of right already. So, you know, just with all respect to the neighbor, I think this project can be done sensitively, will be done sensitively, and will respect the patrons in the business next door and the property next door. So I'm in support of it, I think it's a good project for the neighborhood, and, you know, I think that there's a long history of neighbors working together, working with architects, working with designers, working with the city to give comfort to people who live in projects next door, that when the project gets done, that it gets done appropriately. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Russo, I believe.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I concur with Councilman Cohen's assessment of the whole thing. Having that public hearing, understanding what was being proposed, and that it was part of a settlement is really important for everybody to know. And not only did we get those affordable units that we were owed as municipality and as the residents in the city, we actually were able to gain five additional workforce units in that project as well. So it went above and beyond what we thought we were going to get, not only from the building that's being built, but a building that was already built, and then five additional units on top of that. So those are really important to me, and I know Councilman Cohen felt the same way. So I really hope that everybody would support this project here tonight. And as Councilman Cohen has suggested, I'm sure the neighbors will be able to work out ways that this could really be an amicable build for both the property owner and the neighbor itself. So I appreciate it.
Councilman Ramos.
Yeah. I think there are reasonable requests that we get from the public, and some of it is unreasonable requests. I think asking for a two-week pause so they could have, we could have a little further dialogue, where we could potentially create a win-win situation for both entities is a reasonable request, right? We've done other things in the past to try and adhere to members of the public for those types of things. That's not unreasonable. So I think, I'd like to make a motion to table. So I think, I'd like to make a motion to table, so we can give that two-week pause, and if it's nothing amicable that happens in the next two weeks, gladly move it forward. I think, you know, they're getting the density, not because the property owners were good actors, right? They're getting the additional density because they were bad actors, because they didn't build the affordable housing and the necessary developments that they were supposed to. That's why they're getting the additional height here. So let's just hold that. It's like they're throwing flowers and bouquets. Yeah, we're doing this because, hey, we're nice, the kindness of our hearts. It's almost the opposite of that aspect of it. We had to get dragged into court to get them to do this. So I think it's a reasonable request. I'll make a motion to table, hope someone will second it. If it has the votes to pass, it's great. If it doesn't, we move on. Thank you.
Second.
All right, Mr. Prina, please.
Can I talk before we do it, or no? Or what do you think?
Vote on the motion.
We're supposed to vote on the motion.
Vote on the motion. Not a motion.
Yes, it's table. No, it's-
Yes, this is a motion to table. As Councilman Ramos said, yes is to table. No is not.
You have a second, I think?
Yes, Councilman President Zano.
Motion to table. Mr. Cohen?
No.
Fisher?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Deputy Director, this is to-
To carry it and table it.
Yeah, just to two weeks, yes.
Thank you. Anyway.
All right.
Proceed with the-
The table, all right. Mr. Cohen? No.
No.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
No.
President Zano?
Yes.
Mr. Quintero?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
No.
On the ordinances, on the ordinance-
Okay, no, we can still-
We can go back to, right. We can go back to discussion.
Yeah. So now that, anybody?
Yeah, so I, again, I'd like to echo what Councilman Ramos said, only because we've run into several situations of recent with construction where it's road construction, or actually it's just development in general, where our businesses have suffered. I don't know the implications here, but it is the summer months when we held the meeting. I know this is after the fact that we voted against tabling this, but I think it's important to say this. Summer months, Hoboken isn't here. It's empty. You can find parking spaces. And if you turn around and you have a public meeting in the dead of summer, nobody's around. And I know you say it's well-attended. I briefly jumped on, I didn't think it was that well-attended. Maybe I didn't look at the right thing, but that said, we're not asking forever to do this. It's for two weeks for two owners to talk together, which I believe, you know, it's not adversarial that you heard right there, it can be a win-win that both can get something out of this. My concern is that it's a small business. I have a business in my area being impacted by Hudson Place, Imperial. Their sales are down 50% because we've cut off the ability for their delivery people to get the food there. So what happens is, somebody orders the food, delivery person comes to pick it up, they either can't park, or they can't get to the, or the area, or they struggle because they see it's closed, they cancel the order, the customer's upset, and now they're left with the foods. They're screwed three different ways to Sunday. We had the beer and soda drive-through, they, their business was impacted by 50% because we didn't talk to these people. I don't think it's an unreasonable request that Mr. Ahmed is asking for, so that they can talk professionally and say, hey, what could we do to make sure everybody's happy in this situation? I don't think there was anything that was set up here that said, I'm against the project. I, again, because we had that meeting in the summer, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was a, maybe I'm thinking of a different meeting, but it was in August, and then suddenly it was on the agenda, I think we're not doing our job up here, especially knowing that because of a lot of this construction, which he correctly stated, that going down that road is a nightmare. I would wonder what their books look like, but I've seen it right now with Imperial struggling. We saw it, the beer and soda outlets struggling. And our job up here is to help the small business in town to kind of get to a positive thing. By us not tabling for two weeks, we're not doing our job up here. It's water under the bridge now because we voted, unless you guys want to make a motion to do it again, but I really think we should do this because our small businesses are suffering because we're ripping up roads and we're building like crazy, and we're not taking that into account. And by the way, that business, and I think as you said, Phil, that that was one of the first businesses down there in a blighted area, and they actually did something good for the community. And so I think we owe them that. So I mean, you guys aren't going to vote for it, but I think we're doing a disservice to our small businesses.
Councilman Russo?
Yeah, Council President, I appreciate it. And I don't disagree with your sentiment, Councilman. Like we just voted on prior to this, right? There was a, there's a settlement, right? And there's a second part to that settlement with Union City, and that's going to be ongoing. We could always come back and make an amendment if we necessarily needed to. I think the owners of not only the Beer Garden, but the property should still continue to have those conversations. And if they could come to terms, and those terms are amenable by the residents in that neighborhood, we could always come back and make that change. But I also want to get off the table this litigation. I want to get the settlement finalized, I want to get it moving, and we could walk and chew gum at the same time. And if those two parties come together, and the neighborhood comes together and says, yeah, we don't mind adding a little additional height, right? I have no problem coming back and making that change. I just think that we need to move forward, because a lot of times we, especially here at the council, we kind of get bogged down and we're kind of stagnant, and we've been stagnant a long time when it came to the ratables in the city of Hoboken. I think we're at a point where we need to move projects forward, but if they need to change, I have no problem coming back and making those amendments into the future.
The only thing I would-
Councilman Jabour?
Okay, good, yeah.
That's okay, if you want to make a comment.
I just want to come back, yeah, if it's okay. It's nothing bad. I just would like to say is that when we agree on this, you kind of give a little bit of an upper hand to the developer that's building this building, right? Because he's already got the approval. So not that they're not going to work together, that's the only thing, if we pass it, two weeks doesn't kill it, but you give a little bit of an upper hand because they can say, you know what, sorry, they passed it, we're just going to go with this. That's the only thing that I'm concerned about.
I understand your point.
The other thing we could ask, I mean, I know it's a settlement, but why not in the Harlow? Why don't they just, the next vacant unit, make it affordable housing? I mean, we could have done that, but why wouldn't you do that? You know, I don't, listen, beyond me, that's already water under the-
Talked about all that in the subcommittee for a long time. Getting those units would take forever.
That's what I would take, this thing's still going to take time to get built, but ultimately, you know, I'm more concerned because our businesses are suffering with the construction in our town, and we need to start paying attention to that. That's all I'll say on it.
Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Jabor?
Thank you, Council President. So my concern, and I spoke to Mr. Ahmed about these concerns, I spoke to the business operator as well, so I understand why they shared that feedback. My understanding from talking with Director Brown is there is a timeliness issue associated with this, and that's why I understand the reasonableness of the request. But because of the terms of the settlement agreement, we actually bump up against a deadline that's upcoming. And I don't know, Director Brown, if you want to add anything with respect to that, but I-
In October.
I would just hate to jeopardize that settlement because it, correct, the timing of it is following this action, we have another follow-up action, and all of that has to be done by October, if I have that timeline correct. It's also my understanding that the city did reach out to the adjacent property owner about kind of just a quick rundown of, you know, would you be open to this discussion? And it's my understanding that that would set this back quite a significant amount of time, so that would also-
Said no.
And they said no because of that, because they want to see this resolved, which is something I share, and that wish to see this move forward and to see these affordable housing units come online. So that is why I was not in support of tabling this. I appreciate the feedback and understand the concerns, but I'm hopeful that we can find ways to mitigate that moving forward.
And I believe, from what has been reported, that the reason for the neighboring property, the property owner in question, it wasn't just wanting to move ahead quickly, they actually were opposed to the change in the design for construction reasons as well. So-
Council President?
And the planning board did last night approve this as consistent with the master plan, so. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, just to kind of be on the record, I agree with almost everything everyone said here tonight, but I do agree that the two weeks wouldn't have mattered in the grand scheme of whether the deadline is October or just the building of this project. And, you know, supporting a business that is, you know, kind of defied all of the, you know, obstacles being built where it was built, I mean, it was, it was kind of build it and they will come, and they're slowly coming around it, right? It's just been so successful, so many years, and it's, it definitely has been negatively impacted by all the construction. So hopefully, the, what we can do is help facilitate a construction process that will be the least detrimental to the Pilsner House. The one, the one thing I want to add into this, and I was in those conversations, this sits in the North End Community Development Group, you know, we're all excited to have the affordable housing built and the five extra workforce housing, and we're excited that we've restricted the use on the ground floor to be a use that works for recreation for our community, which is pickleball. But what they got in exchange for five workforce housing units, additional five workforce housing units, and a restriction on use on the ground floor is they got 37 extra market rate units and two extra stories of the building that they just didn't have. And I, you know, that is in the settlement. It had the support going in. They're a big donor to the mayor, and there was a lot of political support behind that. So in situations like that, we do the best that we can, and we get as many benefits as we can, knowing that the project's going to be approved, which is what happened. It's a good project, but we just need to understand that the settlement significantly favors the developer of that building. Even though we're getting some things from it, they're getting a lot more from a value standpoint, so.
Mr. Prina, please call the-
One more point, can I? I apologize.
Yep.
I mean, we talked about timing. I mean, how many years now has it taken with the rest of Ned's to fund the veterans' housing on Willow Avenue, right? It took years and years and years, still no end in sight, and we're like, okay. And then, you know, many of us spent nights and days in the Beer Garden. I just hope that two years from now, we're not a Beer Garden closing, and it's still remaining open in spite of all the challenges of construction going on in that area, and it's just an additional one. So thank you, Council President.
Mr. Prina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Abstain.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Abstain.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Public portion.
Yeah, sorry. This is public portion, comments on agenda items. Alex Garcia. Public portion. No, this is agenda items specifically. Okay, so you're-
He wants me to the other public portion.
All right, and you're on the other one, so that's fine. Lauren Thompson.
I am starving.
Lauren, you didn't necessarily indicate which one you want to speak on, but-
Take a guess.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the right time to do that, right?
Yes, that's correct. Resolutions.
Hi, good evening. Lauren Chang Thompson, 628 Washington Street. Good evening, council members. My name is Lauren Thompson. I am the co-founder and CEO of Blue Violet Dispensary. What else can I say that hasn't been said in over these last three years? We came here and repeatedly promised all of you that there was nothing to be concerned about with the location of our business. We told you our business would be safe. We told you our customers wanted this type of business in this location. We told you there'd be no lines, no extra traffic, and no extra security concerns. Now, with 500 days of operations, I can confidently say that we've been right about every single thing. I do not want to hear again that the law is the law. You are the council. You make the laws. You have the power to change things if your constituents demand it, as they have been through numerous and various emails. I do not want to hear again that Mayor Bala wanted 750 feet, but we compromised on 600, as if there was any logical basis on either of those distance issues whatsoever, a number which was taken from thin air and not based on any sort of scientific research. I do not want to hear you're a non-problem now. I do not want to just ignore months of safe operations from every single dispensary in this city, including the two, us and Village, that are within 600 feet of a school. I do not want to ignore the fact that Village is a block away from me, funded by a former NBA celebrity, and behind the middle school, and they were not sued. There is a crisis going on where people are losing faith in their elected officials. People don't believe that their government is listening to them, and situations like this are exactly why. Reality cannot be ignored. We have been open for over 500 days. We have successfully served this community with care and diligence. I want to remind you, I am a registered nurse with over 13 years of experience between hospital settings, home care settings, and school settings. We have earned the trust, friendship, and love from thousands of your neighbors. Those neighbors include educators, seniors, first responders, and nurses. As a small business funded by two individuals, we have paid $90,000 to the city of Hoboken in annual licensing fees, as well as collected sales tax. It's refreshing to hear that some of you are saying you're small, pro-business, and very much pro. I want to actually also mention that, you know, Paul, President Zano, you stepped in to my store, spoke to Max within the last two weeks, to say that things are looking good. I'm not a problem anymore. And Councilman Rubin, your running mate Alfredo, also stopped by within the last two weeks to also show support. Council members of your, countless members of your community have urged you to rectify this situation. We'll be seeing a lot of those people between now and the November election. Tonight, you can decide to tell them what I will be telling them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Enrique Herrera?
I just actually wanted to pass around this today's date. I don't know, is there someone there I could just?
I'm sorry?
Give it right to Jerry, as he's walking in.
Is it lottery ticket?
Oh, yeah, it's a lottery ticket.
Winning numbers tonight?
Oh, yeah, numbers, fingers, magnets, everything. So that is today's date where I went to a dispensary and I was able to get that receipt back. I support legal dispensaries. I like legal activity only, illegal activity out, legal activity in. When we remove dispensaries, we add drug dealers. Inadvertently, people want to buy cannabis. No more shady deals. In fact, that's a good price point for someone who doesn't really have much. As those price points really reach that integral point of lower-class citizens, that they, with an ID, with the type of screening where they are 21 and up, they can purchase that cannabis. I'm pretty sure also, oh, thank you. Got to show you receipts to make sure, you know what I'm saying? To support legal dispensaries is the future, especially in microgrid cities where crime is rampant, especially in secret, you know, settings where you do go behind closed doors, grab some drugs, especially prior to legalization. This is the future. I think we should go with the future, not the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Point of order, maybe Councilman Russo, or Brian Aloya, or Director Laura. Six people have signed up to speak on ordinances for first reading, which we typically do in public portion at the end. in public portion at the end.
Yes. Well, we've done.
That's what we do.
Yeah, yeah. Cheryl's right. We, we have changed it over, over the course of time. I think your practice anyway, Council President, has been where you have moved that to the public portion, but there have been times where we, we've allowed it during the agenda.
You mean 10 years ago, or do you mean?
No, it wasn't 10 years ago.
Well, what is appropriate? Maybe, Brian, I don't know.
It's completely up to the council. It is your meeting. As you know, there's not a public participation during first, so if the council wants to allow them now, that's, that's fine and probably makes sense. You can take it into consideration.
It does say, bold and underline, resolutions. It doesn't say anything on the council, so. Do you, do you see agenda item on this list?
Well, they're referring to the, they're referring to the agenda.
I understand this. So, anyway, all right. I am fine, but we'll, we're gonna hear you anyway, so, Cheryl Phallic.
I have zero idea what would be the value of talking about this after you vote. Anyway.
On first reading before a hearing that will occur in the future, that's the zero value. And you'll get another opportunity at the next meeting.
You're all voting on first reading, and I want you to know how I feel about it before you vote.
All right. I apologize. Go ahead.
So I am speaking on the ordinance number two, which is requiring owners to prove the rents that were paid. I rise in support of this ordinance, and I want to start the suggestion, I want to start by the suggestion that we should hold up a first reading because there hasn't been a subcommittee meeting is nothing more than a filibuster. We've seen this before on the city council. I'm sure we'll see it again. A first reading is not a final passage. It's just letting the measure get out of the gate. And if we refuse to even let it get that far, then we are putting ourselves on the side of delay and deny, denial, not on the side of tenants who have, as a collective, been treated unfairly and as second and third-class residents for decades, despite the fact that they are the majority of the residents in this city. We cannot keep kicking the, kicking the avoidance can down the road. For too long, Hoboken's rent-controlled housing has been allowed to operate like the Wild West. No one is checking the paperwork. No one is verifying what landlords claim, and no one is standing up for tenants when they are overcharged or pushed out. This neglect has caused real and substantial harm. Hundreds, maybe even thousands of tenants through the years paying more than they should, families and other residents being quietly displaced, and our rent control laws becoming little more than words on paper. This ordinance is about ending one piece of that lawlessness. It says if you want to raise the rent yearly or through a vacancy de-control increase, you have to prove what you were charging before, period. A lease, a receipt, a canceled check, a bank statement, nothing more, nothing less. And with the technology we already have in place, those documents can be uploaded as easily as any other filing. It is not a burden. It is basic accountability. Some may argue against accountability, and let's be honest, some of this is about whether we want, we are ever going to enforce the laws we already have. Oh, and anyone that complains about enforced, lack of enforcement of any law, like, for example, the complaints about the tests and vest law not being enforced, should embrace this amendment with both hands. Because in the case of rental units, lack of verification is exactly the same thing as having zero enforcement. We have here an opportunity to provide tenants in Hoboken a way to finally get some of the protections that are, that our law promises. If you don't act, if you let this ordinance die on the vine, you are complicit, complicit in continuing to, continuing that harm that has been done for decades. Tenants deserve better. They deserve a council that stops making excuses and starts standing up for them. Tonight, you can take that step. I urge the council. Let this ordinance move forward. Let Hoboken know that this council is not afraid to confront the truth, not afraid to challenge the status quo, and not afraid to finally stand up for the people who rent their homes. And let me close by saying this. To anyone that votes against this first step, let's be honest, you are not interested in protecting tenants. You're interested in protecting the status quo, and the status quo has caused great harm to a great many residents over the decades, and that's nothing to be proud of. Thank you.
Eric Volpe.
Okay, well, I really don't have much to add to that. Yeah, except to say, except to say, as, support Cheryl Phallic's positions, words you just said, and I support the, the proposed ordinance as well as a member of both of the Hoboken tenants' rights groups, the Hoboken Fair Housing Association and the Hoboken United Tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. Zachary King.
All right, so, uh, I wanted to speak on this issue and in support of this amendment. It's, it's common sense. It's common sense, right? If we're gonna have a, a rent control law, if we're going to say that you can only set your rent at a certain level, then we have to establish a base rent, and we have to make sure that that base rent is based on truth and not lies. If a landlord can just make up whatever the base rent is without having to prove it, then there's no point in having that law at all. And you know what I think is really interesting, is I hear a lot from this council about how much we love small business, right? We just love small business. And I roll my eyes because that's just the easiest thing to say in the world. It's like saying I'm against taxes. It's, it's such a, a joke to say, and we have to judge you by your actions instead of statements that are very, very easy to make. If you support small business, think about this. The thousands of dollars that any individual tenant is paying into rent in Hoboken, if their landlord does not live in Hoboken, where is that money going? It's all going out of town. It's not going into small businesses. When tenants save money, when rents are lower, more money from my wages, from our wages, is spent in the local economy. This is very well-established economics. If our rents are higher, it's not spent in the local economy. You want to help small business, you keep the rents low. You know what? We're actually not doing enough with rent control. You know what would be fantastic? Rent control on commercial property. Rent control that keeps the rents lower because the real struggle of our small businesses, you want to talk about, oh, sales are down, but why does that hurt them? Why is it so dangerous for sales to be down?
Mr. King.
It's because of these out-of-control rents. Nobody can afford to open a small business in this town. They can't afford to keep them open. It's why we're getting flooded with these big corporate chains. So we should be extending rent control. We should be establishing rent control for commercial properties, and this, this amendment, putting this forward is just common sense. You don't support this. You don't support us at all.
Emily Wirt.
I'm not gonna talk to you guys about commercial rent control, I promise. You know where I stand on that. Hi, City Council, my name is Emily Wirt. I'm a Hoboken resident, tenant, and small business owner. You'll have to excuse me, my heart's beating really fast. Sometimes I feel like a messenger of grief in this world, so excuse me while I pull a thread for a moment. I would like us all to imagine a society that charges kids for school lunches and charges them for after-school soccer, a society that doesn't have health care for all of its citizens and doesn't value mental health beyond an expensive pharmaceutical pill. Think about that same society where the government spends the majority of its budget on defenses and record, recruits poor kids living in segregated housing off to the military and sends billions to support foreign wars and genocides, and says again, oh, health care's too expensive. And then we question why that society has insane gun issues. Stay, stay with me. Imagine that this society then doesn't increase its working wages. Imagine that housing is nearly impossible to obtain for a working-class family and even for young folks with college degrees. Imagine that society facing down impending climate crises. I could go on and on. We all stare at these phones all day. There is collective anxiety, and we know what's going on. I will bring it back to Hoboken, which does not exist in some magical bubble. I love this city, and I appreciate that you guys make, make the local laws here, but we all live as humans within that interconnected society. You know my position on cannabis in this town, and it feels insane to keep begging you to do the right thing on behalf of Blue Violets. I hope deeply that the resolution proposed tonight is accepted. Please let Lauren and Max continue their vibrant and flourishing business, because do we really want another empty storefront on Washington? In this world we're facing, legal marijuana is not the problem, and we must move on and let them be. Because if we want to talk about rules, then that leads me to my next point. I am also here to encourage you to please support ordinance two. I understand it is a first reading. These amendments would require landlords to show proof of rent paid by previous tenants in order to adhere to rent control guidelines, following the rules. Currently, some landlords do not meet these requirements to register their units at all while they outright lie about previous rents paid, both of which are illegal. The way that I see it, you either believe that landlords should be able to avoid, abuse, or outline, lie within the city's housing system, or you do not. That's it, because you believe in transparency and, once again, following the rules, right? We like following the rules. There is no constitutional or legal right or guarantee to a profit for landlords. If a landlord buys a rent-controlled building and realizes that they're not able to make a profit, that is a poor investment. And if a landlord was bequeathed the units through what we now call generational wealth, then I implore them and all of you to understand what a privilege it is to own property of any kind, including investment property in Hoboken in the year 2025. Put your shoes in the, in the place of a renter in this day and age. It may not always feel as such, but abusing the rental system is not the answer to the burden of being a landlord. Landlords provide housing as a human right, and their tenants pay their taxes and their mortgages through their rent and labor, and Leslie do not deserve to be mistreated for the landlord's extra gain. So please, I'll pull it all together. Let the anxious and worried and very hard-working citizens that are living paycheck to paycheck in your municipality smoke their legal weed inside their rent-controlled apartments within this very greedy, capitalistic society that we continue to uphold. Thank you.
Patricia, Patricia Waiters, you, uh, you didn't sign up for, well, I mean, you didn't put.
Yes, I did.
All right, just, it's a question mark. But it's all right. We'll, we'll listen and we'll figure out what you're talking about.
Pat Waiters, I can't top that. I just have one thing circled. I'm talking about the legal fees in ordinance number two. I just recently, and I'm gonna share, Jerry, that clock is going kind of fast for me.
What was the first?
Jerry, you gonna reset that?
Time is a constant.
It's, it's gone, so.
Okay. Um, I, I just moved in recently to, um, church towers, and I want to share this because it drove me crazy. You saying, set, uh, exposing requirement documents to the previous pent, uh, rent for the landlord, to, from the landlord, section 1551 dash, could we get some language from that showing the, uh, previous, because I thought that wasn't on the books. I was getting ready to ask you, Cheryl, do your office, can they provide this? And I think this is very important. Let me tell you why. I moved in my unit, and I do have section eight, but even if I didn't have section eight and the one-third percent, that's the requirement by law to live in a subsidy building, which it is a subsidy building, and somebody moved out and now here I come to move in. Does this language precisely tell you how much they supposed to charge me, and can they charge me double the amount? If somebody was living there paying 1,000, do I now have to pay 2,000? You know, because they could put whatever price they want or whatever, and there's their way they could really find out. And the only reason they found out what the previous rent was for me is because the state stepped in, and they do an inspection, and they asked for a legend for the whole entire property and how much each unit go for. So with this being said, could you explain to members of the public, because I'm quite sure they want to know, and if I'm living in a rent control, I'll be shaking in my boots too, because we all being forced out from people not being transparent. So could you provide that language for them that's on the books? Because the first thing they say, oh, go to the rent control office. We could do this. Then I get a letter with Vanessa Falco and Ravi Bala's name signed off on it. So I want to know who enforced this law and how could we get legislation for this law, okay, for ordinance number two, but still support us on this one. All of y'all are now gonna vote yes. And, um, the recreation fees, I must say this. David Gonzalez have worked hard, okay? Y'all might not think cheerleaders is a sport, Ms. Jabor, but it's a sport, okay? Especially for people that have a love for cheering, you know, I had to see them little young girls from the HHA even tried to get their own little cheerleader, and this is way before David and was always ignored and overlooked. Anyway, yes, my daughter is one of the coaches, and I'm speaking on David and all of them behalf. There was a time where Ms. Russo handled that cheer dynamics, had our kids enthusiastic, looking forward to being the cheerleader. I have seen people get scholarships for college for cheerleading. The thing that broke my heart when Jason Freeman said to David, because we was fundraising, standing on the corners in heat, Mike, you know, begging and pleading, sweat, blood, and tears for every penny we got so we could go to competitions and we could be able to have the, uh, insurance to get on the mat and all of the other things that come with it, is bigger than that $35 interest fee. Now we go make our own money by fundraising, and was told we gotta give the money back to the city. It's not making sense. It's all greed, like I said. It's sad enough that we really don't have it and can't afford it, and we go out and fundraise and do what we gotta do, selling candy bars, begging dinners, victory, anything to, at least so we can involve our kids in recreation. This is a smack in the face. To turn around and tell David that they're gonna take over his cheer dynamics because we're gonna plug him in a budget. Now I'm gonna watch the budget because it didn't pass, and I'm still looking for recreation, cheer dynamics, $35,000. It's wrong, and I don't like a lie, and like I told you, I'm gonna stay emotional until November 3rd, because everything out of your mouth right now and in the grand standard, people wake up. I'm not gonna say it no more. No matter what I speak on, on this agenda, I'm telling you again, stay awake, keep your eyes open, write everything down, keep a list, and check it twice until November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
Yes.
I said, thank you. Jessie Marie Villers, Veers, double L.
Hi, I'm Jessie Marie Villers, owner and CEO of Baked by the River, a small, independently-owned dispensary in Lambertville, New Jersey. I'm here to speak in support of another inspiring small business, Blue Violet Dispensary. As small business owners, we put everything into our work, our time, money, passion, and hopes. In cannabis, this comes with an extra hurdles, strict regulations, constant oversight, and the responsibly, responsibility of being a trailblazer in one of the most highly-regulated industries in New Jersey. Yet, like Blue Violets, we do this because it's our calling and these are communities. What makes Blue Violets different is that they're a true mom-and-pop shop. If there's ever a question or concern, you can speak directly with the decision-makers, not a corporate executive from another state. Hoboken is fortunate to have them contributing jobs, tax revenue, and community care, operating for over a year with zero incidents and zero issues. I encourage the city council to vote in favor of the proposed amendment to the Hoboken City Section 196-3.1 and allow the local dispensaries to continue to operate as they have been. I know the 600-foot rule is under discussion. I wanted to provide a relevant example of flexibility around the 600-foot rule from the cannabis ordinance in the city of Lambertville. In 2024, due to a construction at the Lambertville Elementary School, the elementary school temporarily moved within 600 feet of my dispensary. My dispensary was allowed to remain open without any issues. There were zero problems and zero complaints. There were no underage sales, not even attempted underage entry. Research reports this. Studies from across the country show youth cannabis use actually decreases in states with regulated dispensaries. Our dispensaries are some of the most highly-regulated businesses in the state. At dispensaries, no one is allowed to consume the product on site. We have security. We require ID checks for every person, every time. We have cameras that report back to the city and the state. We are not allowed to advertise with weed leaves or flashy signs. Instead, our storefronts are tasteful and well-maintained. Anyone that has been to Blue Violet Dispensary can attest to that. So let them keep doing what they do best, being a positive impact in their local community as only a local small business can be. Across New Jersey, we see corporate operators using technicalities and legal pressure to try and eliminate locally-owned competitors. Don't let that be the case in Hoboken.
Thank you. Now she's got my list. Jerry, what's the next speaker for resolutions? Who is the next speaker? I know.
Pat Waiters gets a second shot.
Mary Andreca. Yep, yep. Thank you. Is he all set?
Hey, Pat, remember my, my mother used to always say cheerleading is tougher than football.
You're on this.
It's definitely a sport.
You want, we want both? Okay. Excuse me, Mary, I'm sorry for the disruption.
That's all right. Mary Andreca, 159 Ninth Street. I'm speaking on first reading for the ordinance amending the section for the notification of vacancies. I'm surprised this isn't even already in effect. The one exhausting thing that I've experienced all the years I've lived in this town is, is just involving rent control. Other things have been exhausting, but it's never been done right, correct? The people in charge don't do it so that problems will be avoided. We have many apartments that are warehoused, and then maybe somewhere down the road or they're bed and bread fix, and then they want to go back to rentals, maybe, and then you've got a price that's. And then you've got a price that's... What's the proof of what the rent was? My understanding, if you want to take an apartment off and you rent it no more, but there's so many variables in this town. We should have a verification of what the prior rent was. Then you wouldn't have the problems with the tenants constantly having to perhaps check their rents later on when they find out they're being overcharged. I know that everybody's not a renter, but this town has an enormous amount of renters in it that are affected by everything in this town that a homeowner is. And because there's such a constant change of property that someone sells it to somebody else thinking that they can make more money renting it when they don't even understand that there are rent control laws on the books, but they have not always been followed. This has been a nightmare for so many people. And if it had been done correctly from the beginning, then a lot of this crap would have been avoided. It affects everyone's lives. Being a renter is one of the most difficult things in this town. I can say that as being over a three-decade renter. It's been difficult because you're constantly fighting and trying to mind your own business and other people and the law itself. There's a rent control office. I don't think it's being run correctly. I have to go down and have my surcharges and my CPI is correct for my landlord because I'm a decent tenant. I want it done properly. And I know not everybody's doing that. It's a transient town still after all these years, and yet nobody is... The town has not dedicated themselves. It's a law. There's rent control here, so deal with it. This should have been done years ago. It's just amazing how much time and energy and pain without having the correct laws on the books. And I would like to mention that, you know, there are a lot of empty storefronts these days. Now, I've heard that my member, Tony Sora, is coming... Well, there's always been. Well, I've been here long enough to see a lot of things are leaving, and they really can't come in. It's not conducive for people anymore, which is another reason we need the benches. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Rivera Soler.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, just to clarify, I guess, my apologies to members of the public and to you and to prior council presidents. I guess I was out of order this whole time, and I don't think I was accurately or properly corrected. Whereas when I sign up for resolutions, I put consent agenda due to the fact that there are so many resolutions that I desire to speak upon that the line where I write my name is not enough. So I hope that that still is the case, and I hope that I'm able to still ask the questions. And when I also get to the introduction for first reading, I know that I can request to ask the question. I know that you don't answer the questions, but at least I ask you always to at least debate for the public if you're in favor or against any of the ordinance of introduction per first reading, because a few minutes today could save five minutes in the next meeting per person or per ordinance, if you get my understanding. That was meant for you to crack a smile, Council President. Come on. Anyway, I want to go back to the consent agenda. I want to go to climate, action, innovation. Council Presidents CA 2 and CA 4. CA 4, I want to clarify, because in the last meeting, I asked a few questions, and it seemed like I was against any of this project, and I am truly not, who would be against it. It is heritage for many people. As I mentioned in the prior meeting, that the Puerto Rican culture was instrumental in achieving that park and having their residents play in that park. So just so I'm clear, whom I'm speaking of is the Tommy Oliveri Park. I was in Mr. Oliveri's, a family member of his apartment, a couple of weeks ago as I was walking around the neighborhood of the Sixth Ward, gathering consensus for my candidacy. I also want to say in community development, CD 1, Council President, even though this is in an escrow account for the city, what is the analysis that needs to be done in regards to 551 and 552 Newark Street? And, Council President, also, I hear murmurings, in clerk, CL 2 and CL 3, Council President. In CL 3, if council members or Council President can elaborate, give additional information as to why this resolution is being presented today, although I am in favor in principle of small businesses and because I was in the first few meetings when nobody ever attended the cannabis meetings, this, the organization that was just spoken upon earlier, they were one of the most thorough presentations at that time. So can you clarify, what is the language? Is this purely political in this resolution, or does it have any standing for members of the public to understand why is it being presented today? As well as in transportation and parking, of course, Council President, T 3. And again, I ask you to please explain your votes on introduction per first reading. And since I see I have time left, Council President, I could either filibuster or yield back. So I yield back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. Ernest Boyd.
Hello, Ernest Boyd to Marineview Plaza. At this point, I'm the squeaky wheel. So yeah, notification of vacancies. I think both these are just kind of easy, and there's a right and a wrong way. I don't even know why I have to be up here to argue this, but this is, I think the essence of this ordinance is also about the future, about the future of this town. Most of you have children. I don't, but I have nieces and nephews. No one can afford to live in the same city that their parents and grandparents grew up in, whether it's Hoboken, whether it's Manhattan, whether it's Brooklyn. So this is necessary. I don't really think I have to stay up here long because my dear friends said it so much more eloquently than I can. You've already heard them. I'm not going to belabor the point, but like I said, there's only one way to vote, and there's a wrong way to vote, and the right way to vote is to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, Alex.
I can't hear you.
Will there be a public portion? Yes. Oh, there we go. Good afternoon, Council. Alex Garcia, Sixth Ward. I came regarding resolutions, CA 4. So last week, I was at Church Square Park with my daughter, and I went twice. And by the looks of it, it's... Parents are not happy. Two teachers are there, not happy. I'm not sure who designed these parks, to be honest. I mean, like, the horrendous... I mean, the first stage is already horrendous. The kids get bored. Five-year-olds, they're getting bored. I mean, the park was made for mothers and parents to sit down, but the kids are doing nothing but put the sticks, woods. So what I did was, a month prior, I went to James Braddock Park, Eightieth Street Park, right? And it's brand spanking new park. And the fact that I have to go to North Bergen, brand-new one... This is a park. This is the way the park is. Look at the way it is. Beautiful, not even one years old. Yes, it's a county park. Yes, I understand that, different funding. But the amount of money that comes into Hoboken, we can't do something like this? This is a state-of-the-art park. That's just one. I mean, it's literally like a half a black loan, like a huge American Gladiators for kids. It's insane. I was there for three hours, and my six-year-old had a blast. I have to go 30-minute drive, yet the park is looking horrendous over here on the first stage. I'm not sure who approved this design, but I'm hoping we do a lot better on CA 4. That's one. Look at... This is another part of the park. This is the same park, all connected. Do your homework. The same thing I spoke about, Union City, I mean, the things, Washington Square Park, Union City, same thing. I got to go to out of town so my six-year-old can have fun. Now, Bala comes out, you know, we have to do the whole, how can I say? Ecosystem for water drainage. I get it, but think about the kids as well. We're parents. You want parents to stay with the kids, but we have to go to another town to have fun with our kids? It's bad enough we don't have a damn pool. Now, this is the sprinklers, same area, one year old. So I hope CA 4, the design's a lot better and approved by the residents. And you guys, whoever comes up with this design, do your homework. Go to other parks. If you're not a parent, go out there, look at it. That's one. Now, regarding CL 4. So I'm in total agreement of this resolution of directing the city of Hoboken to comply with the New Jersey Administrative Code and the decision of the Service Commission is to avoid us, the taxpayers, to continue the $100 a day. The city is paying taxpayers' money because they don't want to put Brian Kremlins back The Bala administration cannot dictate like our president is doing currently, disregarding the court. We have a judicial system and the Constitution that needs to be honored. The Bala administration is mirroring our current president, and we cannot allow it Put Brian Kremlins back on, plain and simple. I'll wait for open forum. Thank you.
Thank you. No other members of the public are signed up to speak on resolutions?
Motion, close public portion.
And ordinances? All is in favor?
Aye.
Council members for consent? Anything would you like to poll?
CL 4.
CL 3.
CL 4 and 3 thus far. Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Farina? Everything except CL 3 and CL 4.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No on CL 2 and yes on the rest. I had a question for you, Councilman President Zano. In the CL 2, and I should have mentioned this before, the text of it ascribes views of the mayor in three places. It says the mayor and the council, you know, support this, endorse this, whatever. I don't know that we can vote to say what the mayor's views are, and I would suggest that if we strike the three references to what the mayor believes, if he... Unless you tell me that you spoke with him and he's in agreement with that, but...
I didn't do much more than, oh, in a three, okay, so...
It just says, in three places, it says the mayor and the council.
Strike the mayor.
We just say the council.
The council. Strike the mayor.
Okay.
Not that I want to hit the mayor. Strike the word mayor.
We understand. Okay. So as amended?
Yes.
Okay, then, yep. Then I can, then I... Mr. Farina, I will vote yes then, as amended, because that was my objection. Sorry for the confusion. All right? So CL 3.
Council President?
I don't recall who...
No, it's Councilman Russo.
Councilman Russo, we'll let you speak.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to go on the record and state that I 100% support this. Several years ago, at this point, at least it feels like, maybe 10 at this point, this council came back and we enacted what was, at the time, called the reasonable or the common sense amendment to our cannabis laws. I never thought it was a common sense amendment. I voted against it then, and I'm glad to see that some of my council colleagues that voted for it are considering making some changes. I did a little research before this meeting about our cannabis dispensaries across the city of Hoboken, and I made sure the police department really dug into this a little bit so I could get all of the calls for service pertaining to our dispensaries, because we heard so many times that we were going to need increased security, and we were going to have so many people loitering outside of these facilities. And the only calls for service, the only calls for service were accidental alarms. An employee went in and hit the wrong code. There was not one call for service to any of our dispensaries in the city of Hoboken. We have candy stores that don't have that record. This is absolutely the right thing to do here tonight, and I am very, very happy it's on the agenda, but history matters. The council should have never changed the law. We should have moved forward. The market would have bared, just like it's bearing now. We never have it. We have never had an incident to date, and I don't foresee any into the future. I hope all of my colleagues would vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you very much, Council President.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. I'm proud to co-sponsor this resolution tonight. I did vote for the 600-foot rule with the clear intent that it would be prospective only and that every applicant that applied to the Cannabis Review Board and got all their approvals and followed all the rules should not be adversely impacted by any prospective legislation that any politician decides to put forward to placate an angry crowd. And that's what went down. You heard from the owner of Blue Violet's tonight, and they represented that they've paid $90,000 over to the city of Hoboken. We've heard a lot about fiscal issues, but here's a responsible business owner, zero complaints, zero issues with the neighbors. Everyone concedes, even the people who are suing them, that they're good neighbors. Nobody has alleged that they've been anything other than responsible. Nobody. They spent over $60,000 just to get their approvals from the Cannabis Review Board. Review Board? They had to pay that much. It's no joke to get approved by the Cannabis Review Board. And now backseat, you know, drivers are trying to claim... And now backseat, you know, drivers are trying to claim that somehow they did something that was not right. We're going to be voting later tonight to amend an ordinance that will make crystal clear that if you got your application in on time to the Cannabis Review Board, that no matter what the council does in the future, you can't change the rules. And there was a decision of the New Jersey Appellate Division, it's unanimous, 29-page decision, very well, very clearly reasoned, very smartly decided, in my humble opinion, to say that the New Jersey Legislature passed a law for time of application versus time of another point down the road to make the decision, and the time of application applies to the Cannabis Review Board. But this resolution that we're going to be voting on tonight is just stating our support for the four responsible cannabis retail businesses that are operating in full compliance. And it's now, we therefore resolve that the city of Hoboken is committed to ensuring responsible cannabis owners continue to be welcome members of our business community because they've gotten, unfortunately, mixed messages from our elected leaders, some of whom are sitting up here tonight, who've indicated to them that while they support small business, they don't support them, they can't vote for them. Well, I think people are entitled to the benefit of DAP before they came here. It was scary, it was new, we didn't know it was going to happen. Well, we now have a proof of concept, four responsible operating dispensaries, putting real dollars into our coffers, offsetting tax increases, working hard, and for this couple, they're not like a big cannabis, that I think, you know, they refer to Big Oil, there's a reference to Big Cannabis. This is a mom and pop who live in a neighboring town, who are members of the community, who have really made an effort. And I know we've all received emails in the last 24 hours from their customers, many of whom who are constituents. So I would ask my colleagues to, what should be a no-brainer, to say that we support, welcome, and continue to encourage responsible cannabis dispensaries like the four that we have operating in our community, and I urge, I hope that this is a unanimous approval tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Anybody else?
Sure, of course.
You can go first.
I'm happy to go first.
Councilman Fisher?
Yep. So, it won't be unanimous. And I think it's, I want to say just a few things. First, I think we need to call out what this is, right? We're in a mayoral race, there are four council members running for mayor, and the very first week of election season, they put in a soft resolution specifically to get me to say no on it. I mean, that's what this is. There's nothing more to this. It's a great speech by Councilman Cohen, great speech by Councilman Russo, but that's all this is, is political gamesmanship. Couple things I want to, I want to respond to, Councilman Russo, he didn't, Councilman Russo has been literally consistent from day one. He's, you know, he's very supportive of this industry, he's very supportive of kind of an untethered industry. He's been like that from the beginning, and I don't hold anything against him for having that, that view at all. It's not my view, it wasn't, it is the view of some people in our community, it's the opposite of some people in our community. You know, when this, when the industry originally came in and we were putting laws in place, you know, we as a government didn't do a good job of having public input along the way. And so when, you know, in an August meeting, like Paul was saying earlier about the 14-17 grand project, in an August meeting with a gun to our head, having to approve opting in, Councilman Russo changed provisions that no one on the day saw, except Councilman Doyle apparently, where he eliminated the cap. We originally were going to have three dispensaries in Hoboken, that was in our laws for three years, and in, you know, without telling us, and none of us saw it, he eliminated the cap, so we would have had 35, when we went through the locations, it would have been 35. So when suddenly the CRB, who didn't have notice requirements, we didn't even really understand like the implications of the law, and Councilman Russo chaired that, you know, they started having these applications without notice to people, and the community freaked out. And it was new, and it was all of those things, and as a result of all of that, and all the feedback we got, and statements made by our mayor publicly that are still on the website for Hoboken, one of the provisions was, we are concerned about having dispensaries near schools. It was just, you can disagree, we can have the five-year, whatever number of years, I'm just saying, at the time, we created a set of laws where we didn't want unlimited in Hoboken, we agreed to increase it from three to six, and we agreed to make sure we were giving notice to neighbors, because with the story dispensary up by me, there was going to be a dispensary at the base of a condo building, and they weren't noticed. They didn't have a, they didn't have the ability to go to a meeting because they weren't noticed, right? So we put the notice, just like you want notice provisions and all the rent control, like all these notice provisions, like people want to know if there's going to be a change relating to their living environment. So we put that in. And we also put in a restriction relative to schools. Now, the mayor wanted 750 feet. And you know why he wanted 750 feet? Because I said 500. He just wanted to be stronger. He was like, oh, if she's at 500, I need to be at 750. But then he looked at it and said, you know what, 750 is too, too big of a distance, we'll come in at 600. So we agreed. Emily, Councilman Jabour and I, we co-sponsored it, we got all the votes that we could get, and we tried to thread this needle in our community about people that wanted them everywhere and people that wanted them nowhere, and that's what that law was. So that law happened, it got signed, the mayor probably signed that law quicker than any law. And what happened was a dispensary that you're all here for got caught up in the timing. And instead of having a conversation about the timing, trying to figure out a new location, we, they were exploited politically by this group of people on both sides, right? It was political football, and that's where we are. But for me, for me, we have laws that we need to uphold. And notwithstanding the appellate court ruled in favor of Blue Violets, the lower court did not, in a very, in a much longer, in a much more detailed decision. And so what has happened is, because there, every single land use attorney that I've spoken to believes the appellate decision is not the right decision, it's now, and it touches on property rights and land use laws, it's now sitting with the Supreme Court. And they're going to hear it, there's no additional cost to any of the parties, they're going to hear it, and they're going to decide. And that's where it stands, and I'm okay with that entire process. And I know it's not what anyone in this room wants to hear, but I'm okay with that process because it's about maintaining our laws and not bending them for special interests. And that's what we're doing. We're going, and notwithstanding what Councilman Cohen said about how he thought the law was prospectively, I mean, think about that for a second. You are agreeing to a law to not have dispensaries near schools, but you're just okay with this one near a school? Like, that just makes no sense. You pick your, you pick your side, you pick your lane. If you're okay with the schools, he should have voted against it. But you don't get to be okay to have, you know, whatever it is near a school, and then, you know, vote against it. You don't, you don't get to do both, and they're doing that again, right? They're doing it again. Now, what they're doing is spot zoning, where they want to go, you know, go backwards in time and change the law around zoning. And that, that's just not something that I'm going to get comfortable with. So I know I'm not making anyone in this room happy, like, I get it, I totally get it, I totally get it, I'm just walking you through why I am going to abstain on this, and I will be voting no on first reading on the other one. It's complicated, and that's just, that's how I'm getting to my...
Councilman Quintero?
Thank you, Council President. Um, you know, I'm going to echo a lot of the statements of Councilman Cohen and Russo. But first, you know, I was going to go in this direction, but I feel compelled I have to, being accused of, Councilman Cohen and I, both of whom are not running for mayor, by the way, being accused of playing political games, you know, maybe we did it a tiny bit, but I think it's because we've seen probably the master of political games, and I think you just put on a masterclass of political games during, during your comments. So, so maybe if we're, took a little bit of a page from your book, you know, that's okay sometimes. Now, what we wanted to do here, Councilman Cohen and I, was really take stock after a couple of years, two, three years, does seem like 100 years, I think it's my first year on the council, so where we are and what our sentiments are about this industry. And, and really, you know, Reefer Madness did take over the city three years ago. This, and I had a little bit to do with it, I dipped my toe into it a little bit, I was with Councilman Russo on first reading and voting no to the, to the changes. I joined the majority in a regretful decision, and I regretted it almost immediately on second reading. The reason why the mayor changed it from 750 to 600 was because I told him I wouldn't vote for it at 750, so I'll take credit for that. Now, with respect to the prospective aspect of it, it's not changing the rules, it's saying we went with it because we said, you know what, it's not fair to the people who've already applied, time of application, right? That's the question before the Supreme Court. We said it's not fair to change the rules out from people who had already applied, who have already spent so much of their own money. Comments I heard back then was, it's their own fault, they should have known. I'm sorry, everybody needs to be a land use expert every step of the way? So we said, I said during my comments at the time, this is prospective. Folks disagreed, they sued, they could have sued two places, because two places are within 600 feet, but they chose, they picked and chose one, picking and choosing. And it's cost the one thousands upon thousands of dollars to defend this, this position. The community likes them. I would say they're pillars of the community in that neighborhood. I don't know how many people I know say that's their favorite place, but there are four that are open, they're acting responsibly. I think the person who came up before gave us the receipt, 24 cents from that purchase went into the city's coffers, right? So that's real money that we're counting on. No expense, these guys are spending no expense to go to the Supreme Court, I don't know what lawyers you have. All the ones I know need money. They charge. I doubt that they took this case pro bono, maybe they did, probably not. So, yeah, but this resolution isn't about that, that's, that's the ordinance or first reading, and I hope people join, join us on that one. This is about taking stock two years later. We've seen these places operate, we've seen the culture, we've seen what we want it to be like. We want, we have four open, we have two in the hopper, we want, I want them to open as quickly as possible, so we can get those 24 cents at a time coming in, in a time when we're on a fiscal cliff. So let's get that money in. Let's support these businesses, let's make it clear that we want the other ones that come on board to operate the way that these four are operating. We want these four to continue to operate in this way, and the one that's under fire, we want them to know, we've got your backs, we will help you. So I hope everybody joins me in, in supporting this. I understand if you don't, because we just think differently about these things. Some of us have people's backs, some of us don't. Thank you.
Councilman Ramos?
I'll be brief, I promise. Another thing that I don't do, so I don't do soap boxes last council meeting, I don't do political games either, so, but I think everyone, council members, mayors, governors, congresspeople, everyone is afforded the opportunity to reassess, right? Especially after you reassess with evidence. And I think people that don't do that do themselves and the people that we serve a disservice, right? So I think we always, anyone should be afforded that. And I was in favor of, I voted no on the original vote for this back, like, a year ago, I believe, a little less than a year ago, maybe, because it was still going through the judicial system. The appellate court decided, they decided in the favor of one dispens, of the dispensary. And I'm going to abide by that decision. So I think it's time to, like a lot of things in life, time to move on, I think they've proven to be a good neighbor, and I think that's, you know, what we all hoped for from the beginning of this process, not just for this cannabis business, but for all of our, the six that we approved, for all of them to be good neighbors. And I think so far, the four that have opened have done that, they set a standard for the other two, hopefully move forward, and they'll have, and the other two will have to comply to the rules we set forward. So I'll be voting in the affirmative tonight.
Ms. Jabour?
Thank you, Council President. I'll just be brief to say, so I've been to all four of the open businesses, they are immaculate. They have been thoughtful about the design, they've been thoughtful about the requirements, they're thoughtful about the security, they have been good business owners, and especially Blue Violets, I know for you as small business owners, you have done a lot of education and outreach, which I really appreciate too, because I think that there were concerns from community members, and I think you've taken that head-on, and really helped people better understand your business and your industry, so thank you for that. I want to echo Councilman Cohen's understanding, my vote in the affirmative at the time for the change around the common sense updates was because I believed that to be prospective. I did not want to harm people who are already in the process, because changing the game, changing the rules of the game midstream is unfair. And so I will be voting to support this, I will be voting in support of the ordinance tonight, and I hope we can all move forward, knowing now where we have landed with respect to your very responsible businesses. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. Very briefly, I just want to read two sentences from the appellate division decision that goes to what Councilman Jabour is saying, and I think what the rest of us are saying. We held, this is the appellate division's unanimous decision of December 30, 2024, we held that the time of application rule was created because the legislature was, quote, "concerned about situations in which a developer would spend time and money pursuing an application only to have a municipality change the zoning to the developer's detriment while the application was pending," close quote. To avoid a, quote, "absurd result," a quote, in this matter, we must, quote, "follow the spirit of the law." Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President?
No.
No, I'm only...
All right, well, I, for those who are following the playlist, I'm sure you believe that I'm somewhat schizophrenic. I, I voted for the amendment, not because of the reasons many of my colleagues have cited, but because of capping it at six. The 600 feet was not my reason, six had already been approved, so there was, we were just stopping more, and I do believe that part of my process was, the six that have already gotten in the door are safe, but I, I can't say that I, I thought that, that, yes, six were approved. And so, but it offended me quite a bit for the next year and a half, when certain people referred, Councilman Russo and I agree, referred to the, quote-unquote, "common sense amendment" because, like Fox News, if you just say it enough times, then it must be true. But I never thought it was common sense, I, but I was, I thought, you know, we didn't need more than six dispensaries in a square mile. So I voted for that at that time. This resolution also offends me because it talks about, you know, what the intent was when that legislation was passed, and, you know, other than the ability to peer into the souls of the drafters of that resolution, it's also a political spin on, on these events. So I, and Councilman Fisher, I don't know that it's really all about you, you know, I think that the notion that this is all just to make you look bad, as opposed to, to help a small business, might be another motive, but...
The resolution?
The resolution and the ordinance, but this is a spirit resolution, as we've now defined, and I think it really doesn't, it does nothing. The text of it bothers me, and so I'm going to vote against it, just because I think it's a political grandstanding in this, this climate. it's a political grandstanding in this climate. I believe the judicial decisions, with all due respect to colleagues up here, when the decision is good, it's a well-reasoned decision. When the decision is against you, it's ridiculous and it's unfair. So we're, we, you know, the proponents and opponents, if you could characterize them that way, to this dispensary in particular, the appellate division, there is one more appellate division in New Jersey, and that's where this decision should be made, in my opinion. So I am not going to support the amendment, because I do not believe in passing laws for one person. If we were talking about, you know, a citywide change based on mistakes that we, you know, but back to my schizophrenia, I, on the planning board, have voted for every single dispensary, and I will also, when Councilwoman Jabor talked about how clean and nice they are, I think, I think the Blue Violets owners will know, as they got raked over the coals for many hearings at the planning board, that part of the, part of the effort of the planning board reflects how good these dispensaries turned out, and the Cannabis Review Board, you know, I'm not, you know, so that's where I come down on this. Mr. Farina, please call the vote, and this is just on the spirit
Resolution.
Resolution.
CL3.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
No.
CL4?
CL4. If you, if you want, I will, yes, Paul, excuse me, Councilman President Zano?
You can call me Paul, Jim.
I have a brother, Paul.
Oh, there you go.
This is a resolution directing the city of Hoboken to comply with the New Jersey Administrative Code and the decision of the Civil Service Commission, and to avoid continuing taxpayer penalties.
I struggle to understand sometimes government, this administration, and some of my colleagues up on the council that tell me, don't worry about getting sued. It's funny, you guys are all lawyers, and that's how you make your living. Unfortunately, I'm in the process that suing people or getting sued costs us money, and it costs taxpayer dollars. I think many times I've said up here that there's processes and there's systems. And the system for an employee in civil service is to go through the civil service if there's a dispute. Several times, there was decisions handed down, correct me if I'm wrong, that had that individual, the fire chief, that coming out on the winning side in the city was on the losing side. How many times does that have to happen to, no, no, Jerry needs it. Guess it's a tearjerker there. How many times that the city has to lose, and then still continue to pursue it, to find another way to do something, when the civil service and the arbitration that's set up is to protect the employee? We have how many employees in the, 900 employees? I don't know, 6, 900, I don't know what the correct number is, but
500.
500, 500, 600, I'm sorry. That process is set up to help protect them. The lesson I learned from this is that we're not doing the right thing by our people at work here, and that they feel, or they stand the opportunity that if their case or their, whatever happens, goes to civil service, the city's just going to keep fighting until it wins. There's a time that I think here that it's pretty clear, especially when the state gives you a fine of $100 a day, and we're up to $10,000, that we still don't do anything. I think the administration is not doing its job. And the fact that we've wasted how many hours and resources that we've got to put towards better things, we could have saved taxpayer dollars, and I don't want to hear the fact that, oh, well, it's our, it's our attorneys in there, we pay them a salary. No, we had outside attorneys for this. So we've, could have settled this. I hope this is amicable, because there is back pay involved if this decision is processed by the administration, so it's going to cost us. That means we've been playing, we've been paying two fire chiefs. So there are massive implications here, and that when the civil service puts a ruling down, we have to abide by it, and not just losing once, but losing several times. So I hope the administration comes to their senses and reinstates the chief based upon the outcome of this, of the commission, and to the letter of the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. I know this, this resolution is, really focuses on the expense and the cost and the taxpayers, but for me, this is a little bit beyond that, and I fully agree with all those aspects of why I think we should reinstitute Chief Crimmins as our fire chief. But it's also, for me, about fairness. I have always had the confidence in Chief Crimmins. I know some of our fire battalion chiefs did not, I know the backstory of how this happened, I know there may be some council members who do not have that confidence, the mayor might not have that confidence, but I have always had that confidence in I think now, after the decisions have come down, as Councilman Ramos said before, there are times where we get to kind of reassess and reevaluate a position or a decision that we made. I think now is the time that we should do that as a council, and ask the administration to comply and reinstate Chief Crimmins. I think he deserves that, I think he is qualified in that position, and I think the city will be better off for that. I appreciate your time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Fisher?
Keep it brief, two things. One, we have two orders from two different judges. We have a civil service judge, and we have an appellate judge in the state of New Jersey that have said he needs to be reinstated. So as of right now, we just have an administration that is defying two judges' court orders. And we just need to not have that, right? Everyone's kind of flipping out about, at the national level, you know, Alex, you mentioned, like, we have a president that's just trying to defy the law, and you know what? We just need to follow the law, right? The law moved against us, and that's not taking the city's rights away from continuing its appeal, it's just saying, well, the appeal is happening, you, the city lost legally, they asked for a stay, they basically asked to keep him not reinstated while they were filing the appeal, which could go on for a long time. And the judge came back and said, no, enough's enough, reinstate him, and then in parallel, you can still do this appeal. And I just think it's time for that. I would agree with Councilman Russo. You know what? I don't want to take away from people that, that we heard from, that struggled, you know, with their chief, and, you know, we all have struggled with our bosses. I know I said brief, right? Oh, all right. Yes, that's
Close session.
Oh, sorry. No, it actually wasn't closed session, these are people I had conversations with separately, but I won't, I won't go into it. But I just, you know what, there's also the other side of it, which was, you know, in the comments, in the legal comments of, you know, the city being pretty, very predatory against him along the way. And I just think it's, it's time to have the city just follow the letter of the law and reinstate him, and I would like to see that happen as soon as possible.
Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, I want to talk about following the rule of law. This council, when it comes to personnel matters and litigation that relates to personnel matters, has been directly told that we're not to comment on them, that it's pending litigation, that as fiduciaries of the city, we have a duty to maintain confidentiality. And typically, that's what we do. Yeah, we understand our role, we understand that we're protecting taxpayers in active litigation, where the city is being accused of things by an employee who's also has, and we've seen it before. But, but I've seen a pattern, and, I mean, anyone who's been paying attention in Hoboken has seen a pattern, that when there's an election coming, then people recalibrate whether they should follow advice. And a number of the people who are supporting the resolution tonight with respect to a matter, and a totally unrelated matter, totally unrelated situation, and no parallel in terms of facts, stood on the steps of City Hall and demanded that an employee who had lost his job was allegedly done for political purposes, and was getting the business by City Hall, and stuck alongside that employee, and that employee since pled guilty to stealing from the taxpayers of City Hoboken. And there's a reason why we're told not to comment on active cases, or talk about settling cases and that kind of thing, because there are real implications for taxpayers of City Hoboken. So I'm going to follow lawyer's advice, I'm not going to talk about this case, and I don't think my colleagues should either. And if we want to talk about settling this case, we should do it in closed session, like any other case that's active against the City Hoboken. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Councilwoman Ramos, so yes, I
Thank you. Just one clarification, no one stood in front of the steps of City Hall and said that the director that was let go was fired for performance or other reasons. People stood in front of the steps of City Hall and saying, a person that was fired is saying other allegations into other areas. It's kind of like Sammy the Bull was an assassin, right? He knew how to take John Gotti down. The federal government worked with Sammy the Bull to help get John Gotti. Same thing. Someone may have had some evidence to other things, we're saying, that individual may have evidence, please question that individual on this potential wrongdoing, if there is any wrongdoing, if there is, please pursue it, if there isn't, thank you very much, please hear it out. That's what was said in the steps of City Hall, that's what was said there. To this point, goes back to the, similar to the cannabis item, where, you know, we took an L, right? Pursued it, we lost, and it's time to move on, but, right, let's acknowledge that there were some issues that were brought up. And when he does assume his leadership duties, those issues just cannot be addressed under the rug, right? They need to be discussed head on with the leadership of this city, on how we could help them perform their duties as chief better, and with the morale of the fire department to boost, to boost that around the fire department. So we can't make the decision when our heads in the sand, say everything is hunky dory, need to face the reality situation, where it was going both ways, but to move on with a path that's clear for the men and women of the fire department and the residents of City Hoboken. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jabor?
So part of the premise of this resolution, and by the way, to the point made earlier by one of my colleagues, welcome to September, this is another one of those things, and to say it's not is a lie, because this was asked in an interview of mayoral candidates last week, and then what do you know, a resolution pops up on the agenda. So here we are. But one of the underlying statements included in this resolution is that the city is being assessed a fine, and so part of the motivation of this resolution is to ensure that there are no more fines assessed. But Corporation Council, we had a conversation, and it's been my understanding, actually, that the city has not been assessed a fine to date because of the fact that this is actually open and continuing litigation. Is that your understanding as well?
No, the city hasn't paid any fines currently to date, but the fine that was ordered is actually capped, so it's not continuing to grow and grow and grow.
So it's pending the result of the litigation, though, in terms of how this would get paid out?
If the litigation was one, presumably the fine would be reduced, but that's not guaranteed.
Got it.
When I say reduced, disappeared.
But are we supposed to be paying the fine?
Excuse me?
Are we supposed to be paying the fine?
Okay.
I'll let her ask a question.
Are we supposed to be paying the fine? So the civil service hasn't asked for the money, and it hasn't done, I think they're waiting for the case to end as well.
So my understanding of this situation, and this is consistent with when I spoke about it before, is I consider this a personnel matter that includes a number of different aspects that are confidential. That's confidential to Chief Crimmins, out of respect for him, it's confidential to the other members of the fire department who we have spoken to in closed session, and we've spoken to them in closed session because we're supposed to keep the content of those discussions confidential. I have to respect that. I'm a public employee as well, and I would want to be afforded the same rights. When talking about my own personnel record, I would want to be respected in the way of ensuring that there was confidentiality to those proceedings. That being said, I understand that there are a number of other things going on for the fire department. They are trying to move forward under kind of the cloud of this ongoing dispute. And I think that's regrettable, because we've had a number of different swearing-ins, we've had, you know, just last week, we were here, and there were four new firefighters sworn in. I regret that we are not spending time talking about real issues facing that department, because there's just been this ongoing distraction of this litigation. It's regrettable for everyone involved. We all need to be able to move forward. And I know that the sort of posture of this resolution is out of fiscal responsibility, but I think it's also about the culture of that department, and wanting to ensure that they can be successful. And I know Chief Peskins has done an incredible job continuing under these conditions, because that can't be easy for you. It can't be easy for all of the leadership of the department, and I would like to see everyone be able to move forward. As a matter of fact, and separate from the facts associated with this case, do I think the city needs to abide by decisions that come down in these court matters? Absolutely. But I don't get to make that decision today, nor does anyone up here. That's why this is a spirit resolution, because we don't actually have the ability to make that decision, because that rests with the mayor. And so it is fact that this is still an open proceeding litigation that has not yet been settled, because that was the decision of this administration, and they are awaiting their court date. I am hopeful that there is a way that we can move this conversation forward in the future, that doesn't involve a continued distraction, and that we can get back to the business of the fire department, out of respect for everyone involved. And that's my hope for, not just for this council and silly season of everything, but for the people who are working every day in that fire department. So, thank you, Council President.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
The civil service decision is public, correct?
Yes.
Right, it's not so
Nothing secret.
There's nothing secret about this. The civil service decision is made public for everyone to read.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Not true. Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Abstain.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
Okay.
So on to ordinances for first reading.
Pass or fail?
An ordinance amending Chapter 190-9 entitled Stop Streets, designated to add multi-way stop controls to the intersection of Bloomfield Street and 13th Street.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Council President, just a point of order, that resolution passed, right? 431?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
431 abstention.
431.
431.
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Council President, just a point of order, that resolution passed, right, 431?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
431 abstention.
431.
431.
431. Okay.
Want to check what the...
I'm not sure. Mr. Alloia?
It's a resolution. Simple majority.
Vote was 431 abstention.
I believe our council rules say abstention. Council majority.
If abstention counts, it's a no.
Yeah, you need five votes.
No, you don't. You need five votes for an ordinance, you don't need five votes for a resolution.
That's, I believe that, I mean, at least Robert's rule, that's what I thought.
Resolutions are passed by simple majority, it could have been, it could have been seven abstention and one yes, it would have passed.
Abstention is not a yes or a no.
Well...
I just double-checked that.
The question is, right.
He says our council rules, he thinks our council rules say abstention is a yes or a no.
No.
Oh, he's checking.
I'm pulling him up, I'm checking him.
Because when people vote in conflicts, they vote abstention.
Right, we can come back to this.
Councilman Russo, may we proceed?
Well, we get the answer.
Well, yes, that was why it was a point of order, I just wanted to make sure if it passed or if it failed. That was it.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm not, I'm not here to make any other statements.
We're at number two. Mr. Farina?
An ordinance for introduction, Section 154-3, notification of vacancies to require documentation of previous rent payments, and adding Section 155-1.1, proof of previous rent paid.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Point of order, on the website, it says carried. So can you help me on this? I mean, it says carried right there.
This afternoon, temporarily this afternoon, it was, it was suggested to be carried, but it was, it has two sponsors.
So, all right, so explain this to me. I get what the public said about subcommittees and everything else. Unfortunately, we have a rule that it should go through the subcommittee, and last week we do not have a rule, we have a policy. Okay, so it's the policy. So then, last week, when this was shot down because, or was table because...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, thank you. That, in that time, it should have came to the subcommittee. I'm asking the question, because I went down and talked to the rent office, and they have some questions, but we didn't address it. So I just want to, I'll vote yes tonight on this, and we can talk, but I just want to understand that if you're on Team Bala, you can just put things on the agenda?
Please.
Because you didn't follow the policy.
It was not on the agenda last Thursday at 4:00, is that what you're saying?
No. This, this did not go through subcommittee, and if it doesn't go through subcommittee according to policy, it doesn't get the agenda. So my question is, is there a special rule, if you're on Team Bala, that you get to put stuff on the agenda? Because if that's the case, then I'm going to be putting stuff up, putting laws up, and I'm not going to go through subcommittee. So if we start this standard, let's just follow through it.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Jabour?
Perhaps our colleague doesn't realize the definition of policy means it's really a courtesy in terms of process with respect to how we work, and it hasn't necessarily always been the case, but I know that this council president has tried to adhere to that process.
Rules are for fools.
At the last, excuse me.
No, rules are for fools. It's Team Bala, it's a Team Bala, it's a Team Bala thing.
Councilman, I didn't interrupt you, I expect the same treatment, please.
Follow the policy.
Excuse me, do we have to go to recess?
Yeah, let's go play, let's go on the swings. Let's go on the swings, because this is a circus up here right now.
As a courtesy, last council meeting, we were asked to carry this to ensure that the subcommittee could discuss it. It was my understanding that the subcommittee would ensure there would be a meeting. That meeting did not take place. All of the other subcommittees, as my understanding is, we meet every other week to ensure that we are covering agenda items. There is an urgency associated with this ordinance due to some of the comments that were made earlier with members of the public and some of the buildings that are in your ward, and so we carried it as a courtesy. Because the subcommittee didn't meet, was not my understanding, I had been under the impression that it would. We, as the sponsors, would like this to move forward, we understand there will be a subcommittee before the next council meeting, so there will be an opportunity for this to be discussed.
Before the final hearing.
Before the next and second.
So, so if there's a change that has to be put in, that has to go back to first reading, so essentially by not following, but essentially by following, if you would have followed the thing, went to subcommittee, we could have been voting on this tonight, and then pass it potentially at the next meeting. I'm just asking the question, because if...
You're not asking the question, you're making a statement.
Okay, I'm making a statement, then our policy doesn't count.
Council President, ordinance two?
Yes, ordinance two.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
But I will be putting things forward.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Council President, just according to Robert's rules, even if there's a policy and there's a duly sponsored and seconded, anyone could put anything up at any time.
Yes.
I just wanted to put that on the record.
This is a courtesy.
Don't we love election season?
He's filibustering, so you can get out of here. Give him a moment, and be, don't be gone long, Councilman Ramos. Okay.
Ordinance for introduction, vacating portions of Monroe Street right of way.
Please call the vote, Mr. Farina.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Abstain.
Jabour?
I mean, you have me as an abstain, right?
President Zano?
Which one, we're on three.
I'm sorry, you're asking whether he got you down as an abstain?
Okay.
That's why I asked.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordn, oh. Councilman Ramos is back.
Council President?
We got to get the dome of silence.
Yes. Corporation Counsel, Mr. Alloia.
So the council rules just indicate, they don't change the effect of exemption, but just so you know, in addition to voting yea or nay, a council member may abstain or vote present, which has the effect of an abstention. And Robert's rule says an abstention doesn't count as a yes or no, so Councilman Russo is correct, it's a majority wins, so that decision passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone, appreciate it.
An ordinance for introduction, amending Section 141A-3, Hoboken Municipal Code, entitled Temporary Permits to Remove Requirement for Certified Letter from a Dean of Students as Proof of Registration.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
I'm a yes, by the way.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance for City Hoboken Code, Section 196-33.1, cannabis, to clarify application for 600-foot rule.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance for City Hoboken Code, Section 196-33.1, cannabis, to clarify application for 600-foot rule.
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
An ordinance for introduction, an ordinance amending Chapter, Hoboken City Code, 168, Article 8, Road Opening permits to ensure proper engineering controls to designated restricted areas as per the New Jersey Department of Environmental Services.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Jabour?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
An ordinance for introduction, amending Title 168 of the Hoboken City Code, entitled Streets and Sidewalks to Establish Protocol Requirements for Removal of Public Seating Within the Public Right of Way Protecting Accessibility of Pedestrian Amenities and Requiring Public Notice as Public Form Approval of the City Council.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Jabour?
No.
President Zano?
Aye.
Quintero?
No.
No?
He's a no.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
Public portion.
44, failed. Yes, it did.
Alex Garcia.
Did you just do this? Six-seven.
My daughter would be going like that, six-seven.
Alex Garcia, sixth ward.
Jerry, please.
Um, here we go. I got to take out my kid's time restriction. All right, here we go. All right, so my mom lives in Columbia Towers, actually, you know, Paul's not here, I would like for him to be here for this conversation, it kind of affects his ward. But nevertheless, I spoke to Paul about this, and observe a highway between Bloomfield and Garden, those parking spots were taken away.
Yes.
Can I ask, by whom?
The engineers have rebuilt by design.
Okay, so the city, and these engineers are a bunch of geniuses, that's what you're telling me, because they're a bunch of geniuses, because apparently, I mean, they haven't noticed that there's a senior citizen building on the side block, and there's two open spots, maybe three there, that's for drop-off of senior citizens. Now, that's become a permanent parking spot, because they took all those parking spots away. So now, last week, I tried to drop off my mom, and, oh, where's my, and I couldn't. Why? Because people are parking right there to drop off groceries for across the street on the plaza housing. The norm is, I'll drop off my mom, drop off my mom off for some groceries, park right there for five or 10 minutes, bring her up the steps, come back down. I mean, that's, as a son, any of us, any of us would do it for their mom, who lives in a senior citizen's building, of course. But what's going on is, they took away all those parking spots, and nowhere for people to park now. So if you guys don't have parents living in that building, I got a problem with that. Because now, I have to basically, I have to delete the video, because there was a lady taking off her groceries, and I started recording her, and she, "Why are you recording me? Because I want to show this to the city." And she was coming with the baby, I mean, they got a little vocal, but when I explained to her, it's not about them, I'm trying to use as an example, because people make parking there permanently now. And I had no, so if my mother, I had to basically double-park, I had to double-park in front of Columbia Towers, okay, wait for cars flying through, trying to get through, so my mother could go on the passenger side. So if my mom gets hit, let's say by a car, because there's no parking spots at this point, who's going to get sued by? Who? I'm going to sue every fucking one of you who voted for that, not you guys, I'm just saying, no, no, I'm trying to say in general, I'm sorry. Because that's, there's no parking spots in the front anymore than the Columbia Towers. Why? Because they took away all those parking spots. Why? Because of bike lanes? I'm tired of damn bike lanes. So if my mom gets hit, because you know what, I seen it myself, my brother's done it, the lady from the, my mom's on the fourth, I forgot, sixth floor, she's doing the same thing, that when her, her other, her daughter drops her off, they'll have a problem dropping them off in front with groceries, I mean, they have, I mean, going out, I'm just trying to say, it's getting to the point, is that these parking lanes, these e-bikes are becoming a hassle, now they're affecting the elderly at this point. So I have a video here to record, I recorded for you guys. Explain one more time, into screen time, there we go. I don't even know my own passcode, damn it, anyway. I have a video to show, but nevertheless, I want to be able to address that we need to have some kind of, where's Paul? There you go, Paul, you weren't here when I had the conversation. In front of my mom's building, people are parking around the front, permanently now at this point. People from across the street, dropping off groceries, leaving their car there, I mean, like, I can't even drop off my mom off at this point. It's getting, it's becoming a hassle at this point, we spoke about this, okay? So now, it's continuing every single day, why? Because of that damn bike lane. They're not, there are, you guys are, that bike lanes are hurting the people, the fact that we're losing parking spots, you talk about businesses, about businesses, all right? And the false earnings is coming up. Businesses are losing money because people don't want to come to Hoboken, because there's no parking spots. Or if there's parking spots, we're charging them in a Sunday, parking fees.
Mr. Garcia.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Time is up. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council President, the issue that he's discussing tonight was brought up in our committee meeting, with Rebuild by, our last Rebuild by Design committee meeting, and I asked those questions, other members followed up with that question, and they said they wanted to accommodate the bikers on the northern side of the street, because the southern side of the street was being taken away because of construction. And that was not, excuse me?
And I think they said that something like 1,000 bikes a day use it, so it's not an unused bike lane, it's a heavily, I think that was the number, right?
Yes. But we did not codify the change.
Mm-mm, we didn't.
Quick solution, give back to spaces around City Hall.
Lauren Thompson?
Thank you. Enrique Herrera?
Oh, boy.
Public portion.
You yield, is that me? This is, I got Manny.
So I'm just going to clarify that this specific public portion involves migration and number systems. In terms of migration number systems, in legal speak, trafficking is illegal migration, whether or not it's enforced, and if we go back 200,000 years ago, through time, it's real time today, most of that stuff was illegal regardless, in terms of trafficking someone or migrating somewhere, it was never an easy time, you had to go from point A to point B, and there was some tribe in between with a shaman that hated you all, and it was literally something like that, and you had to go through it, big armies, stuff like that, ancient wars, and then go into history, and whatever. Women migrate since 200,000 years ago to real time today. They have religions that provide doctrine, governments that provide regulation, and in between all that is family, friends, and professional contacts, school, work, et cetera. It was never an easy time. You had to go from point A to point B, and there was some tribe in between with a shaman that hated you all. And it was literally something like that, and you had to go through it, big armies, stuff like that. Ancient wars, and then go into history and whatever. Women migrate since 200,000 years ago to real time today. They have religions that provide doctrine, governments that provide regulation. And in between all that is family, friends, and professional contacts, school, work, et cetera. It is your body and choice whether or not that is uncomfortable to hear from a man or a woman or anything like that. But that also involves numbered systems, phone numbers, authority, stuff like that. Enforcement numbers, number four, which involves certain numbers, fingers, and magnet styles critical of in regards to Neuralink. And its misuse is when it involves that type of migration where you're in a group setting. You all think it's funny to like use the technology. And at some point, it is real time communication, gossip and cheesemath. You know, that is, that's the cake, that's what it is. That specific technology I'm referencing is in some sense of entropy, where it is an algorithmic collapse. Prediction scale technology is where we would want to go. That in itself is no longer available. So not to mention, because of certain bot farms that involve taking ideas, I was able to actually let it take my idea of AI 1218 to provide that sense of algorithmic collapse, where that type of prediction scale system in microgrids and modern grid systems is unavailable. It only relies on real time. It will never go by an illegal numbered system of a gangbanger. It will go to a police officer, which will issue a 60187, send a cop over to whatever female in real time. Prior to, I was able to remove the illegal activity through this indirect attack as I combated and campaigned against illegal, you know, technologies that involve real time communication and how that lack of risk management led to discrepancy in how women migrate, whether or not there are male enforcements. This has nothing to do with governments or religions. This has to do with how you don't go to the police for anything until afterwards. And that, I guess, I'm going to tie that into a comment made by a constituent that saw something in Columbus Park or something by the library where somebody was like jerking off. And they waited until afterwards to call the police, or they kept hitting up Emily Jabor, where she referenced to call the police. She gave the number and everything like that. But I don't want to go to the police. I'd rather as well hit someone else up. She's not going to go over there. So I just think that, getting back to the course of the algorithmic collapse that is entropy in terms of Neuralink and in terms of all of that, it is obsolete technology from here on out because of how I've structured the framework of the attack, which was to give my ideas to these bot farms, which involve algorithms that take the idea, provide new algorithms, which now lead into that to sense of entropy that if anyone does use this numbered system, if it matters, numbers, whatever. If it's high-end technology and I point the finger at something, I know everything, then it's going to get destroyed immediately because you don't have the authority to use that. It is now in the hands of, without their knowledge or consent, Chief Aguar. Oh, he's not here. Okay, never mind. But that being said, that's just my public portions on that specific algorithm, which is 0101T, which is no longer a corrupt scanner code. It would just be, it would just be just that. It would just be a warning code for police to apprehend anyone using that technology in real time. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary King.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, let the record show that Hut is now bringing seat cushions for our friends and allies out here because these benches are so uncomfortable. So, you know, you know, we're in it for the long haul. I also, like, I kind of resent this notion that I hear floating around tonight about silly season because of the implication that you're all normal the rest of the year. You know, I've been coming to a lot of these meetings and I feel like it's not quite the case, either on that side of the banister or on this side of the banister. And one of those things that comes up, you know, I hear a lot of talk, like, again, going back to things that are easy to say, like, we're all for the working man, you know? We're all, we're for the working class, the working person. And part of what comes out in that that I hear a lot is this, like, we're against taxes. We're not going to tax you. We don't think we should have taxes. And this constant opposition to taxes, I'm seeing it in a lot of campaign stuff right now. I just want to come out here and, you know, say something that I think none of you are ever going to say, which is, I kind of like taxes. Like, I think that they're necessary and important. And I think it's sort of un-American to just straight out say you're opposed to taxes or to always say I want to lower taxes. Like, the cool thing about taxes is unlike all the money I pay to my landlord, I actually get a say over how it's used, right? I think that's kind of cool. I think it's kind of cool that, like, some of the money that's going and taking out, going out of my pocket, I get to come here and give some comment on. And other people I disagree with get to give comment on it. That's cool. I don't like how much money is just going to landlords, often who don't live in the city, who are spending that money on like expensive gifts for their mistresses or whatever it is that property owners do. I don't know. No one in my family managed to own land. We've been in this country since 1634, and they never figured out how to own land. Riddle me that one. I don't know how I ended up in this situation. But I just want to say that, like, I appreciate taxes. I think it's silly to hear all the stuff that's like, we're anti-taxes all the time. We need taxes. And I saw recently that we cut the budget apparently to the rent office, right? And I heard, I don't know if this is true, but I heard it's because that money wasn't being used. Like, I heard that they were like, oh, yeah, you gave us this big budget, but it's not being used. Maybe that's incorrect. But I just want to say, like, there's a lot that that could be used for. There is so much that the city's rent office could be doing that they're not. And, you know, if you gave that same amount of money to Hut, we could help a whole lot of people. I'm not saying you do that. I'm just saying, like, there's a lot that could be done. If you just want ideas, come to us anytime. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, stop. I'm a little shorter. All right. Zach, I just want to say one thing to what you said. Oh, Patricia Waiters, 15 Church Towers, and don't come to my house. I want to just say, I just want to say a few things. Zach, this is normal for an election cycle, okay? You, when you say crazy, you want to see real crazy after November 5th. All of the promises that they looked in your face and told you go down the drain. They'll walk right past you in the street. And you said, remember, we was protesting about the benches? What benches? They get amnesia. That's what's scary. And that's why it keep repeating itself, and it won't change until we change it. Serious. I know how you feel when you say taxes. Everything they say out of their mouth because it sounds good to the human ear that's being impacted by such. And I'm serious. From affordable housing, no parking, the dogs, the bike lanes, the rats. How you think I feel 37 years sitting in here? And I hear it and I know it, and it break my heart to look in that audience tonight and don't see none of my opponents. Okay? Y'all wouldn't randomly just pick anybody and throw them on your ticket and think they're going to make Hoboken a better place to live. It's so funny. I like meeting people like Zach that's new to the game and pick right up on it. You know? And I laugh because y'all keep overlooking me, undermining me. But I'm going to get an opportunity. I sat down in my house yesterday and went back from 2020, I think it was, just random emails where I used to get letters in my mailbox. Patricia, the parking is this. What do you think? I came to all of y'all. All of y'all was just starting out, even the ones like you, Paul. You relatively new, Joe relatively new. I'm talking about the real old city council. I'm going back Giachi days. And I ran across one from my favorite person, Dee Millie from Marineview. And she said to me, Patricia, I need your help. They wouldn't raise the Italian flag, blah, 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 crazy. Old Pat Waiters jumped right on it. And I got documents, I will show you. I help everybody. I got tons of emails. And I laugh because here we go again, another election cycle. And they said, Pat Waiters, you're going to mess up the election. And Tiffany, I told you I was going to say this. When they come and say to me, 3,000 people that voted for me, Patricia, did you win? Oh, shit, you lost again. I said, I didn't lose. I didn't lose. What did I say? I won because I'm going to run again and run again and run again. Because eventually they're going to wake up and they're going to get tired. They're going to be a Zach that notice every little thing. And once you notice things like I do at this front row, it's about accountability. I fear none of y'all. I don't even feel a resonance to say they ain't going to vote for me. I fear none of that. What I want, it ain't what I fear. What I want is to see real change in Hoboken. And the only way you change is change the game. Y'all playing by the same old playbook and it's all raggedy now. You can't even read the words. It is so funny that we got the ball in our court and people watching this is still being fooled and tricked by y'all, jumping in every photo. Mike got out his car tonight, we was protesting. What did I tell you, Mike? Don't come over here photo op, no pictures. This ain't politics. We need benches back. The lady with me said, I don't want a hug, I want a bench. And this is how we feel. Y'all not fooling the public. I'm going to come to every meeting like I told y'all and speak on a public portion. And I expect my phone to ring off the hook when I get home because I'm sincere. It's about accountability. So when you want to know where the rack's going to go, where the parking going to go, how many more garages y'all going to build with thousands of cars in it? Blame all of y'allself. Go home tonight and look in the mirror and say, all of this stuff that's taking place is acting on the hands of all of y'all. All of y'all. And bottle team, bottle team? Oh, that's so funny. That's real funny. All of y'all got to want change. And be honest, some of y'all shouldn't even run. Turn your petitions and call tomorrow and say, forget about it. Because that's the only way we're going to get real change. And I want to address one thing closing with the recreation. I'm not going to do like I did the benches and was tricked them when I made a call. They said, oh, we replaced the benches and replaced only two of them. I'm asking you respectfully. I just went outside and took pictures on purpose. And I said to the chief, look at the benches. Guess what? 18 people outside sitting on the benches. Some of them sleep with pillows, but I'd rather see them utilized by residents that live here, whether they homeless or not. Put our benches back, y'all. Please. Well, I'm going to go to Home Depot and order some benches and put them out there myself and send y'all the bill. Thank you.
Up, up. Okay, Mary Andraika, 159 Ninth Street. First of all, thank you, Mr. Stratton and Jennifer Gonzalez for speaking with me before this meeting. I was seven minutes late, but I've been having a bad day with my migraine. I wanted to know from them, because I did come down here personally twice to try and find out before that, why the benches on Washington Street were removed. Nobody seemed to have a good answer, and they were all maybe using their gossip to make up things. Homeless, the lady didn't want it, Loten Terso didn't want it. But I deal in facts. I try to. And if I don't know them, I want them. And my understanding is that the benches were removed, and correct me if I'm wrong, to redistribute them in other places to make sure that there was an even keel of benches throughout the city. And I said, well, why remove what you've got? If you need more benches, order them. Because this has caused a lot of chaos and unhappiness. And we did spend 24 million, was it, on Washington Street? And the benches are gone. I did come home Saturday one day with boxes and sat down by the tree that I used to sit on the bench because I just needed to take a pit stop. That's unacceptable in my book. And many elderly people that rely on the benches have, that know me, have come to me. I do not understand why a city employee was paid. And Mr. Stratton said that was orders from the director, Diane. I don't know her last name. I just introduced myself to her tonight. And I see she is gone. I was told she comes to all the meetings, but she's maybe doesn't listen to the public. I don't know. I'm just surmising. Why did she make that command? And then the minions under her follow her orders? She is the director of, it used to be the Environmental Services, now it's Parks and Recreation. Well, it should be Parks, Recreation, and Main Street, Washington. This is insane. It's illogical to remove most of the benches from Sixth to Ninth because then they forcibly had to put one back on Seventh in Washington on the West Side. You saw the West Side, which I am on that side because I live on Ninth, so I make a left on Ninth. But to remove the one in front of Ninth in Washington, Seventh in Washington, and Sixth in Washington to distribute it somewhere else, I think that that's not distributing, that's, there's an absence now. And the absence is also visible on the other side too, but specifically absent on my particular route. That's illogical. And I don't know why Diane did this. There's no answer other than the fact that they're redistributing them. But they will re, I was told by Jennifer Gonzalez, they will replace them. So go figure why the city is spending all money all over the place. You're up, you know, Paul, I agreed with you last week and what you, two weeks ago, what you said about the money with the, with the parks crap and we need infrastructure. I agree with you. I do. There's a money problem in this town. Why create more problems? You removed benches which were screwed in. And I see some of them, when they replaced, they left the big end of the threaded parts so somebody could actually cut themselves on it. They weren't as neat as the first time, which were done many, many years ago. So you're not thinking logically and you want somebody to vote for you or the mayor, a mayor to be. You've got to think rationally because it's upsetting people, and I'm really peeved about this one. Also, I want to thank the speakers that spoke on the first reading because, you know, that one about rent, if you all were attentive and you listened to the people and you voted in unison on that. That's important before you just vote for voting sake. So I will be expecting my benches, my benches, your benches, everyone else's benches, to be returned soon. Please. It's not fair to take it from them, from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Daniel Minutili. I live at 129 Bloomfield. I've been a resident here 33 years. Don't typically come to these meetings, but I did years ago. And I'm coming here tonight just to make you aware of a situation which may relate directly to you or indirectly. So I run all the time. I've run the New York Marathon like 35 times. And I train going down Observer Highway over toward Target and back. And so as most of you are aware, they've been doing these projects with the flood wall or whatever here. And so it's continually more and more construction, more and more disruption to the path for anybody from Hoboken that walks to Acme, walks to Target, Home Depot, Newport Mall. People coming and going are from Hoboken. I know that part is Jersey City, right? So on our side, we have the situation now that they took away most of that section where the people walk and ride bikes on the side. And now with the municipal garage, they put up a fence. Then they've now moved another fence within two feet at some points on the sidewalk. There's obstructions directly in that path repeatedly. So there is utility poles, which they did try to go around that. There are four parking signs. There's trash cans. There's a lamp post. And there is no way that you can go on that sidewalk now without, if you have a shopping cart, a stroller, if you have a dog, whatever, there's absolutely no way to carry anything. So people, if you go, and I encourage you to do so, you go over there and stand there and watch. And 90% of the people are walking now in the bike lane. And so what happened to me the other day, I got hit by the motorized bike, okay? And luckily, I saw him until last second. He was on his phone. He wasn't even looking. And of course, they don't pedal those bikes, so it's just rolling right down the street. So I put my arms up. I got thrown into the barricade, but I didn't really get hurt, you know? I called a friend of mine. I said, oh, listen to what happened. He said, he also got hit and fell, and he had scrapes all up and down his arm. I came here and told the people at City Hall, listen, there's absolutely no way. You can't even cross the street. Because across the street, they have a large white machine. I'm not sure exactly what it is. And so if you try to cross the street, the only way to get around that is to walk about half a block in traffic on Observer Highway. So you're absolutely either going to be in the bike lane and potentially hit, or you're going to be hit by a car. There's absolutely no way to get through there. And then they moved the bus stop also between Bloomfield and Garden. And those people, in order to get on the bus, stand in the bike lane because the bus is on the street. And so there is no way for them to get on the bus without potentially getting hit by a motorbike. And so this is a real problem, and not only for the city, for safety and for the residents that live here and all your constituents and the people that are elderly, people with small children. But it's also a legal issue because if you get people hurt or killed in that section. So I went to both construction crews. I also talked to the engineering department here. And I said, listen, this is just completely unacceptable. It's only been like this about 10 days now on the Hoboken side. And the one contractor, one contractor said, you know, I'm going to talk to the management. The other one said, I don't care. I don't care because it's my job to get paid. I don't live in Hoboken. What do I care? The city of Hoboken approved it. And I'm like, what about safety first on a construction site? And he said, safety first only relates to construction workers. It doesn't relate to the people in the community. And I'm like, this is ridiculous, you know? It's totally ridiculous. So I'm just making you aware and I encourage you and the engineering committee because they said, well, we met about it. We thought about it. I worked in investment banking for 30 years. I was in a lot of meetings. So it's one thing to sit in a meeting room. It's another thing to actually do it. And so I encourage that committee, yourselves, to go there for 20 minutes and watch what percentage of people are walking in that bike lane. It's like 90%, okay? And it's very unsafe. And also with the cars, if you go in the traffic, obviously, these people drive very fast here.
I just asked a question, Council President. So is it the entire length of Observer or is it just a block of it?
No, it's just the block by the municipal garage because that's also where that white machine is across the street. So you cannot even cross the street to avoid it. You have to go through there. You can go all the way down to First Street, but these people are not going to do that. And, you know, I know, I'm going to be double safe, you know, I'm going to make sure. But I'm just making you aware. And Terry Castellano is a friend of mine for years. She encouraged me to come here tonight and make you aware of this situation because it's only been like this, I don't know, eight or 10 days. But I already got hit. A friend of mine got hit. You know, there's other people that are elderly or some small child is going to get hurt. And I would like to prevent that from happening to somebody else, you know?
Thank you.
That's pretty much what I wanted to say. Oh, and I had also told them three potential quick solutions. One, they've got two bike lanes here where when you go over the overpasses over as you're going toward Acme Store, there's only one bike lane and you've got people in it and you've got bikes in it. But this one, you have two. So because we had on the other side painted brown for pedestrians and you had painted green for the bikes, they could make one lane brown and one lane green, and that could be done in a matter of hours. And at least you have one lane for people. Then you could move the fence back another three feet. I don't know the reasoning. I'm sure they have some reason why they tried to move it that far to the street. And on the other side, they could move that white container or whatever that machine is and get it out of the way so we could cross the street and walk in that section. So those are three fast solutions if somebody wants to pursue it.
Your suggestion.
I think he's going to.
Yeah, Caleb's going to.
He's going to look into it.
What's that? Caleb's going to look into it.
Caleb's going to look into it. Thank you for pointing it out.
Well, Rivera Soler.
You yielding?
No way. He's ready. Oh, shit. Look at his shoes.
Thank you, Council President. Once again, good evening. Put on my glasses so I could be brief. Council President, first, I want to thank you and the council for voting this evening on B 805, the special law enforcement. It is important for our residents, especially our young residents, our children, to feel safe, to feel safe where they go to school, where they play, their parks, when they walk home, but especially as was voted today for the special law enforcement in the schools. Council President, I say this because I know that I always can buy late in the game here at the public portion, and I always say kiddingly, of course, that I am the consoler of the council, again unofficial. But I just want to say that that ordinance goes a long way to make residents feel at least the steps, the beginning steps, pardon me, of having full safety in our communities is very important. Myself, as a person with a disability and many other persons with their senior family members, they need to know that their neighborhoods are safe. As I say again, when I was walking through my neighborhoods at the Sixth Ward, the first concern or a primary concern was safety. Safety on the sidewalk so they don't trip and fall, safety for the motorized bikes, the e-bikes. So safety is a paramount concern. So having voted for that, you are showing the residents of Hoboken that you are seriously involved in the safety of the community. Council President, and as I said, I would hope that we could also again join our fellow Americans. Again, I'm sorry I get emotional because this happened a while back, but I want us to join if we can send our thoughts and our prayers as we always do and as I always urge everyone to do for the horrific shooting that occurred in Minneapolis a few short weeks ago. This is horrifying. It happened again in a place in a house of worship, which should be one of the safest places one could at least have our children. So I would hope that we can be compassionate, and this is the reason why I come in and say this, not just because I want to think or I want anyone to think that I am here just to take up time. It's because I want our city to be compassionate. I want us to know, I want people to know that we value safety. We value safety not only in our personal safety, but we value the safety of others. We value the safety of people's homes, being able to afford a home, being able to go to a hospital that is there and reliable for them. So I thank you and I appreciate you, you all for, for listening. And again, Council President, I say as always, we pray again as well for the, I'm sorry. We pray for the hostages, the Israeli hostages. We pray for the innocent civilians of Gaza and the Palestine. And with that, I say Slava Ukraini, glory to Ukraine. Peroyem Slavas, glory to the heroes. And Council President, God bless you. God bless you all. God bless the Sixth Ward and God bless Hoboken. Thank you, sir. Now you're back.
I've got, yeah.
Thank you.
And now I got it. Jeremy Miliola. Did I butcher that? Or was that a K or an E? Micol.
It's like the orange. Nick Lindsey said, wait till they adjust the mic. Five minutes, my phone might run out of battery first. Construction, I appreciate all the comments. My, my friend wanted to relay what a mess construction is to town, particularly with like sidewalk closings. I also was biking by the same area you mentioned that was by the Observer Highway. I can't imagine that as a runner, I was on a bike. And my friend also raised concerns with 24/7, no parking notices uptown. I know that's some of a concern where there seems to be no construction happening. Over 527 Adams, the sidewalk was closed for months due to an oil tank excavation and seemingly no work was done on that, just kind of dragged on. And it also reminded me of the Midtown Garage when metal was falling and scaffolding. There was no scaffolding, if I recall, and the sidewalk traffic kind of got redirected. There's a meme going around about the Schrodinger's Detour on 11th and Adams. If you've seen this, where it says detour both ways and it's making its way around. And that kind of sums up the situation in town. I was just at the Hoboken Ice Cream Social. I got some swag from the Shogger Group, which is a big construction job contractor for the city, so I'm happy to see them giving back at least. And I just got your council email today. It was, Hoboken isn't just a city, it's a feeling. I don't know if that was ChatGPT or a good writer, but that's a good line. And to Zach's speech, you mentioned never about raising the property taxes. I think that was one of the points about not wanting to raise the property taxes. I would agree with Zach. Taxes aren't really a problem. It's wanting to be concerned with how they're used. Happy to pay for something if you see the results. I've been inquiring with the city about Sunday morning street cleaner runs. I don't know how that's happening. Waiting for an auto response from there. The guy in PRA was actually the, the masturbator was not in Columbus Park. There was an undercover cop in Columbus Park. I don't know if that was HPD or the sheriffs, but I was kind of curious. They were already looking for somebody there. The incident that came up was on PRA, which is already a hazard because of the goose poop, but I'll digress. Upcoming mayoral council election, I wish we had ranked choice voting. That's all I can say about that. There's a big field there. Church Square Park Tree Branch, this made my Labor Day weekend. I am excited about the tree branch. It was resolved. I know Paul was down there. I saw Emily get involved with that. Started Sunday, Saturday afternoon at 4:30 before the fire department had the Rushmore View Fire. I hope everyone was okay there. And Parks and Rec had it cleaned up Tuesday morning. I shared this in Hoboken Mommy's, it did not get a big response, but it was the, the highlight of my Labor Day weekend. I noticed the playground fence of the new playground broke last week, but it was quickly fixed before I could figure out how to log into SDL and report it to the city. So great on Parks and Rec catching that. And then I heard with the upcoming redesign, as they're going to be shuffling the playgrounds around, the big drooping tree over by the library and the monkey bars might be disappearing. As far as I know, there's nothing wrong with that tree. It would be sad to lose, and I know this was already voted on, the proposals and everything, but it's sad to lose trees when we don't have to, especially if they're old and they're good for climbing, unlike the ones down my road center. To Alex's earlier comment, I'm less concerned about the, how the parks are being planned and just more about how they get maintained. So I know like the Northwest Resiliency Park, I don't know what the marketing resilient city, I forget what it's actually called, but the, the things there just needs attention to be after we build something to just keep maintaining it. Emily Worth's bike got stolen. That was sad. I'm at the halfway point, 3 o'clock, sorry. Luca Brasi, new owners, glad they're still there. Had a great bacon, egg, and cheese this morning. Hoboken General Store got a new kitchen this weekend. That's my regular spot. I miss Franz's Deli. Jersey Mike's is a mean rendition of a, of a nice sub to save me the trip to Edison, but it's nice to see these old delis in town. Canvas votes, the court case is what it is. It's too much for me to paint ChatGPT right now. I just find it interesting that the THC beverages are showing up in regular liquor stores and bars irrespective of the, any distancing laws. I have no idea what the legality is at, but it just seems very strange to me. Amazon delivery hubs, I've noticed this today as I was walking back and forth to Brant School. Shout out to Principal Bartlett, he really knows how to work a room there. Over at Six and Clinton, it was a big Amazon rider truck kind of parked out with, and I saw cones and there was kind of like blocked off on the corner. I don't know what that implies for Vision Zero. I think it was on the side where it wouldn't obstruct a turning radius, maybe. But what I did notice walking back and forth today, they could use placing these things near public bathrooms and where race receptacle, sorry, waste receptacles are. Because we, everybody has a story about a corner garbage can that is there for a few weeks and goes missing. These things seemingly move around town like the benches. But if we're going to have the Amazon delivery hubs, I think it's more efficient for them than parking the vans all around, but let's try and find a way so that the folks working there have access to bathrooms and everything. Final countdown, benches. Yes, we need benches, but they need to be kept clean. And I think it's also somewhat of a distraction to talk about when we start removing them. Why, like, what are the problems with the benches? Why, why are some businesses requesting that they get moved? And how this, there's, there's been some of that. I could talk about that offline. The shelter, also Hoboken Shelter does have a public bathroom for everybody. When I was walking our dog, the, saw people, a guy running, peeing in the street. So it's not just, we can't blame this on homeless, it's just generally people don't care, whether it's ATVs running on sidewalks, whatever happened to caucus last week. So the problem isn't less fortunate people in society, it's just carelessness across the board. And so I'll give a shout out to the Hoboken Poop Patrol on that. Thank you. We are 520, I'm so sorry. Bye bye.
No problem. Thank you.
You got it, Owen.
Matthew Velasquez.
Right. Good evening, members of the council. On behalf of Hoboken United Tenants, I am here to voice strong support for the proposed amendment to rent, the rent ordinance. This is a valid, this is a vital measure essentially, essential in providing fairness and transparency in our housing process. Requiring landlords to provide documented proof of a unit's previous rent is a common sense measure and not an unreasonable ask. It should be the bare minimum. It protects tenants from arbitrary and potential illegal rent hikes. This amendment is a clear win for everyone. It promotes transparency, builds trust, and reinforces our city's commitment to affordable housing. I urge you to support this essential amendment that promotes clarity and fairness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Cheryl Phallic.
I thought you took her off.
I can hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm teasing you.
So Mary turned and looked at me when the two speakers ago said something about a tree being removed in Church Square Park. Some of you might not know, trees in Hoboken and our tree huggers, it's a big deal. So before you all jump up and close the meeting, because remember, you're all paid to be here and we're not, please, somebody deal with that. Answer it. Is it happening or is that just a rumor? We don't want that. Okay, that's the first thing. The second thing I wanted to say is, Mary mentioned it briefly, well, she actually thanked the community who came out and spoke on ordinance number two for first reading. But I wanted to point out, this is the reason that the public should be able to always speak on ordinances for first reading. A little piece of me feels like had we not called out the troops to come here and stand at this microphone and say, please vote yes, something tells me that wouldn't have been a unanimous vote in support. And something tells me it was even possible it might have gone down on first reading. That was the concern, and it's probably helpful to all of you to know that we don't want ordinance to, ordinances to die on the vine. And we do know that you are responsive when a lot of people speak on one thing. And this is really just a matter of opening up the conversation. I think the last meeting that I was at, I came up to speak on something for second reading and I was, somebody up there, I'm not going to mention any names, said it's second reading, this has been available for two weeks to discuss, but, and again, not mentioning any names, there is a council person who I could show you the text, has told me they will not speak to me anymore because they don't respect me. So I waited until the second reading to speak and was basically told, hey, it's too late. So please keep that in, who's ever still on, well, I guess a good many of you will be on the council depending on what happens in November, but it was always the case that we could speak on things on the agenda that were on for first reading. And so many of you talk about transparency and to let something die on the vine because nobody knew that the citizenry might have cared about this is not transparent. So please keep that in. A lot of times, people have no interest in speaking on first reading, but when they do, they should always be able to. Thank you so much.
No more members of the public are signed up to speak.
Well, should I pause the public portion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council President?
Yes.
I just have something really brief.
New business?
Yeah. This is a fairness issue. I got a, a letter from a resident over at 920 Park. And just in case we don't have a committee meeting, this would go into my committee anyway, but just in case we don't, I want to just put it on record, there's an issue with a party wall, and we don't address how either of those parties can alter that wall. And I, what I'd like to do is put a simple ordinance change up to just allow for either party without the consent of the other party to, to, to work on that wall. Like this instance, there was a roof leveling and they added like three feet of a wall so that the roof was straight. And it went into a crazy litigation, and this resident is actually being threatened to be removed from their home because of this. So it's a, it's, it's a fairness issue. I think it's, it's something that, we can most certainly talk about it more offline, but I did want to bring it up because I do want to try to move something forward so that if there's work done on a party wall, that the person doing the work would be responsible to maintain it and there would be no other issues for the other person adjacent to that wall. So it's a very convoluted issue in the courts right now, but I think there's something that we should be doing so that there's something on the books because currently there's nothing on the books. It was approved, the work was approved by the city, the zoning officer approved it. The work was done after the fact. There was a lawsuit. I mean, this has been back and forth in the courts. There was one ruling. Now there's a stay on that ruling. It's going to an appellate division. It's getting like kind of crazy. So I just want to put it on the record, I'm going to be moving something forward to address this, and I most certainly will work with the committee. Hopefully, we'll be able to sit down in a committee meeting. But if not, then we can most certainly do that over email and get that to Corporation Council.
And maybe, maybe we can actually just have a conversation because it sounds like you had a conversation with the person on the other side, where I had the conversation with the person on the other side of what you're talking about. And we should, you and I should probably have a conversation and square those.
Yeah, it's a fairness issue. However, we make this fair amongst parties. Thank you. That's it.
Two things, want to wish all the students, parents, and teachers, administrators, who started school either last week or this week in the new school year. And tomorrow at 4:00 PM, ribbon cutting for Southwest Park, a long time coming. It came out really beautiful, so hopefully everyone come down and enjoy it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Just, I'm, it's too bad that Ms. Phallic has left, but I, on the agenda, it specifically says, this is earlier in the agenda, public portion slash comments on the agenda items resolution. It is clear that it is the resolutions and not the ordinances for first reading. So next meeting.
We'll take the word resolution off.
We, we will either make it more clear, but we will not be having the, the ordinances in this, there's still the public portion at the end, and frankly, people can change their mind between first and second vote and, you know.
You depress.
I have to tell you, I 100% agree with Cheryl, and I had these conversations with you guys, and we did used to have, be able to talk on first reading because it influences our vote. It influences our vote. We could potentially vote no.
Yeah. All right.